Recording in progress.
Rise as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the same states.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. Really pleased to have you all here with us today. Couple notes before we start our open comment. While we are here on the dais and many staff are here, we do still have members of the public and members of staff joining virtually, so I do need to occasionally toggle back and forth in my screen, so please give me a little grace. And then a reminder that we do take breaks every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes between items and as needed. So with that, we begin every meeting with our open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item that we will not be taking public testimony on later in the agenda during a public hearing. Each person has up to two minutes for a total of twenty minutes. I'll be keeping track of time through a variety of methods. We have a little stoplight here and the clock on the wall. Know that I may cut you off if you are nearing the end of your time, and please don't be offended. We just want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak if they would like to speak. While we welcome feedback and ideas about city business, we do ask that you address me as the presiding officer and are respectful in your comments. If you have materials to share with the council, please hand them to Clerk Geisler sitting right over here. She will distribute and make sure that we get those materials after the meeting. I have a list here of those who have signed up. I'll use the order that they are signed up. If there are others who would like to speak, if we have time, I will ask so. We encourage you to limit your comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy, and I think that is it. So we will go ahead and get started with Abe Sauer.
Council Mayor, how are you guys doing? I have two things. First, my son says that the city council should provide Nintendo switches for any child dragged by their parents here to testify. The second is, I would like to address the down-by-the- riverside vendor fee situation over at the Mayo Civic Center. I was, as you probably know, some of you anyway, for like twenty years, there were no vendors inside Mayo Park as part of the Riverside thing. People kind of always wondered if that was a good idea. I was the first one to do it. I think it was, I even forget what year it was, it was like two thousand and seventeen. Didn't go well. It was like a mess. And then we brought it back and did it again. City did it again, I think, two thousand and twenty one was the first year. It was choppy at best. People have been told for twenty years to bring their own food and beverage and everything. So it's just like really hard to get it going. Last year, a little bit better. You know, I think that there was some more interest and they kind of had a better plan. I learned recently while they put out the call for applications that they're now requiring a hundred and twenty-five-dollar vendor fee for any of the vendors to be in Mayo Park, vending as part of this. I just think that that, you know, puts it at a level that is above per hour of requirement. It's above what is charged by Thursday's On First, it's above what's charged by the Fourth Fest, and it's above what's charged by the farmer's market on a per-hour fee. That's, you know, really established events with people who are there to buy thousands and thousands of people. I think, I don't know, you know, I don't really know that I need to do this in public here. This is kind of a show to do it this way. I did send some emails asking about why this was this way, and I got no response, so I'm stuck bringing it to you here publicly, just asking why the Civic Center feels the need to gouge vendors at this level. I know the city's been very involved in DAI stuff.
Okay.
And just the vendors who vend at these events are disproportionately represented from that community, so you're hurting them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Casey McGregor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Casey McGregor. So I think you guys need to take a step back on spending. Last night, the House and Senate passed PMFLA, that is Paid Family Medical Leave Act, which the taxpayers then you have to pay for yours and the staff's. And it is projected at thirty-seven percent higher than it was originally projected. So I think in order to not go into the red, or you should really take a look at the new, the fourth engrossment. Also, the Earn, Save, and Sick Time. I had a client in from Charter saying this was hurting them at their level, and they can't imagine what this is doing to small businesses. Both of these programs are going to hurt your small businesses, hundred people or less, dramatically because of how much money they take out of the paycheck and how much money the business has to put in. It is a very scary time with these bills. I get that they sound good, but how much money that comes out on the back end is very scary for the business owner. I read the water ordinance, and I'm concerned that there was nothing noted about cannabis in there. Cannabis crop can be grown multiple times a year, and in this climate will have to be usually indoors, and it takes an obscene amount of water. So I'm just kind of curious on where that was in your ordinance. The winter parking I hear is coming back up. I don't know if any of you have ever played the park on the either side of the road by the day. Sometimes I know it's Monday, but I don't know it's the twenty-eighth. And I had to play it for the first time this year, and guess what? It really sucked. I have never played this game before. It was awful. And I commend any of those neighborhoods that have to play this game with three or four cars because they have teenagers, and it is
Final thought.
It is not a fun game to play. Final thought, I am adamantly opposed to the ethics complaint placed on Mr. Palmer, as I do believe he is just standing with his community, doing his job as a liaison. Thank you.
Thank you, McGregor. All right, that's it for those I had signed up. Would anybody else like to speak at open comment? All right, we will close open comment and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keane.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
All right, thank you, Clerk. And I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zalms, for her report.
Thank you, Council President Mayor Norton, councilmembers, members of the public. We always start this report by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in all they do. Did just want to give a shout out to the teamwork of our police department and fire department displayed on Sunday at the vehicle fires over at the Andover Park Apartments. A lot of activity happened before a fire showed up. Great teamwork by our police teammates in evacuating the building before RFD arrived and making sure that they were well informed of what had happened on scene so that they could get started quickly with what was a pretty risky situation. So thank you to the teammates that responded to that call and all calls, and do so with such great teamwork. Also, did want to point out that this Friday is Bike to Work, six-thirty for you early birds, to nine-thirty. You can come at eight. It's stations at Cascade Lake Park, Mayo Memorial Park, Mayo Clinic, St. Mary's Campus, and Mayo Clinic Downtown Campus. There's more information on our website under Active Transportation. But Friday, the twenty-fourth, we are celebrating Bike to Work Day. Also, this is the time of year when we start inspecting public trees and/or private trees that are a danger to public property. So this year, with the teamwork of the Parks Team and the Community Development Team, a financial assistance program has been developed with our Community Development Block Grant Funds to help to finance the removal of trees for those who meet financial eligibility requirements. So do just want to make sure that people are aware of that and that removal should be done by licensed tree contractors. A lot of these are pretty big, pretty big trees, so just making sure people know that's underway. Also on Friday, good collaboration with the Rochester Fire Department and the library, so ten-thirty to eleven a.m. at Station Two, which is on Wheelock Drive in northeast. There is storytime, youth and family event, and you can meet some of our firefighters and have storytime at the fire station. Also, did want to really also thank a lot of our teammates. It's Month of Recognition for Public Service Recognition Week, Building Safety Recognition Week, Public Works Recognition Week, and Preservation Recognition Week. You've taken a lot of actions on some preservation items, as well as obviously lots of capital projects that come through. Want to thank all our teammates and in building safety and public works and across the organization for the work they do. And then just a reminder that it is still, the month of May is still Mental Health Awareness Month, and so just invite people to join city teammates in being seen in green and recognition. So with that, I would also, one more note. Note that we are working diligently on setting up the systems for the 311, which is a non-emergency information system where folks can call in, will be able to track the calls and route them to the proper department for response. That will be launching in early fall of two thousand and twenty-four. You'll be able to reach that by phone by calling 311 through the city's website, through a chatbot, so the back and forth chatting, a branded application for your mobile devices or online, and then text messages and email will also be available. We want to make sure we have it set up well so that it is a smooth start. But you can see, well, maybe you can't see, there's, oh, we haven't announced what the chatbot's name is yet. You have to stay tuned for that. But that's exciting. And coming up, we're excited about being able to deliver that additional service so that it's easier to reach folks with your questions. We have information logged so that we can answer more quickly and that we aren't fighting the struggle of things getting piled up in email. Now I'll turn it over.
That's great. I was just wondering about the launch date. Very exciting. All right, Mayor Norton.
It is. Thank you. And I'm going to start, I have a few announcements today. I'd like to start by asking Chuck Sibley to come up to the microphone and just, if you'd just stand there for a moment. Just come up here.
No, read it out loud.
All right. Mr. Sibley's ordered me to read this. "Life is like a camera. Focus on what's important. Capture the good times. Develop from the negatives. And if things don't work out, take another shot."
I love it.
For that. I've asked you here today because we really want to recognize what you've done for this community, and I know you've had lots of celebrations. Not all of us have been able to come to them because they've been at your workplace or at other venues. And so I just want to highlight just two or three things. Chuck Sibley, for those of you who don't know, was a videographer, although I don't think he started, he was an assistant when he first started, at KTTC for fifty-one years. In fact, when I read this, you started in nineteen seventy-two. I think I was starting high school then. And started and moved up and became a videographer. You've won numerous awards for your work. I know in reading all the coverage, you always talk about the Gopher Count as one of your favorite stories and
Nothing better than the Viola Gopher Count.
And when I went to visit, one day you showed me that video, and it's worth watching. So if you can ever just Google that, folks, and read about the Viola Gopher Count. You've always done marvelous coverage for the city and for all of us in the community. It's, you've done marvelous coverage, but the thing that's really impressed me the most, I think, in the later years, is I've known you since our kids were playing baseball together years ago, but as a videographer, watching you coach and mentor new reporters who come into the station, sometimes asking questions that they don't yet think to ask, you coach them and help them be better reporters, and it's just been a wonder to watch. And so today, I wanted to invite you here to surprise you, and some folks here have encouraged this, but I'm going to bring it to you and for folks to see, we're giving Chuck Sibley a key to the city.
Wow.
Yeah, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all you've done. Do you want your sign back?
Yes, please. Hey, keep working hard, City Council. Keep working hard. You guys are doing a great job, and be the best listeners you can be. That is every bit as important as what you say. What do I know? What do I know? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chuck. More fun to come. Thank you, Chuck. Really proud of you. I have a couple other announcements we'll let Chuck probably want to bail out. He sat through a lot of city council meetings over the years. He doesn't have to do it anymore. Next, we have just a couple announcements. May is move with the mayor month. We've been kind of working through events this last weekend. We had one, Heart Health Day was today, and we did a proclamation for FAITH Heart Health Day. And for those of you who don't know, FAITH stands for Fostering African-American Improvement in Total Health. And Dr. LaPrincess Brewer's been working in this community since she came here to improve the health outcomes for our African-American residents, and so we recognized her and recognized Heart Health Month today in the atrium, so that was really nice. I'm going to, we do have Bike to Work or Anywhere Day, which has already been talked about, and on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, at Teroloco at ten a.m., we're going to do a women's walk, and probably men could come too, but it really is sponsored by the Rochester Women's Magazine, so I would invite folks to join me. We have Bike to Work Day, the administrator, and I should probably talk ahead of time about our slides, so I won't go into that one. It is Love My Neighborhood Week, so you may have heard a little bit about this. May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, Our Neighbors is hosting this. And just a reminder, to get out, knock on a neighbor's door, take a walk with them. That'd be great. Have a talk with them. Bring them a balloon, whatever, but be kind to your neighbors, love your neighborhood. Okay, or food. Bring them food, anyway. As has been mentioned, it's National Public Workers Week, and we want to thank our hundred and forty public works professionals in the city. That's also been noted. I'm not going to read the proclamation because they get long, but I do want to mention it's ALS Awareness Month, and I'm sure most of you are aware ALS, also known as Lou Gehrig's Disease, is a really tough diagnosis. People, after the diagnosis, survive two to five years. There is no cure. Many of us have known people, and in fact, we lost a mayor this past year, and our council president has had very personal relationships as well, losing her father several years ago. But one of our mayor friends lost his life to ALS this year, too. So it's very meaningful, so I do have a proclamation, which I'll post online, but basically it's recognizing this month as ALS Awareness Month, and so I will post it online for folks to look at, and we really want you to understand a little bit more about ALS and support the research advocating for increased funding when you can and stand in solidarity with those families who have had to deal with and be affected by this disease. Again, we've had several folks step forward to, for work reasons and a variety of reasons, to resign their positions on boards and commissions. We have had some people move out of town. There've been a variety of reasons. So this is a list, library board, music board, Ward Three, park board, Ward Two, pedestrian and bicycle advisory, and we're looking for people more interested in the pedestrian side than the bike side, planning and zoning commission, and police policy oversight. We now have two vacancies, and actually, there's a third one because the county, we have to change our ordinance because the county has disbanded its Human Rights Commission board, and so that, it's written in our ordinance that we appoint someone from that board, and it is no longer. So really, we have three openings. So I would suggest, if you know someone, it'd be great, or you think you'd be great, please apply online under the mayor's page and under boards and commissions. And we're going to just call that a day. If you have any questions, call the office, and we'll do our best to help you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we will move on to approving the order of the agenda. I've not been informed of any changes.
I'll move approval.
All right, any discussion, Councilmember Keane?
Nothing to add.
Others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'm just going to confirm with Councilmember Dennis which item she decided to pull.
Thank you, yeah. So I know we have a very growing city and busy agenda. I polled several items, I did get some answers, so I would like to rescind my inquiry about the Park and Rec Sports Recreational Complex. I have my questions answered on that, and also I have my questions answered on the Park dedication. So F seventeen and F twelve, I will rescind my polling of those items, but the rest I will like to pull. Thank you.
So, so Councilmember Dennis is pulling F three, F ten, and F sixteen, which will be discussed under reports and recommendations. Anything else that I missed? Otherwise, I'd invite a motion to approve and block items F one and two, four through nine, eleven through fifteen, and seventeen through twenty. All right, any discussion, Councilmember Keane? Other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay? Motion carries. Okay, we are moving on to our public hearings, of which we have six. So I always take a minute to go over our procedure for public hearings, which varies a little depending on whether there is an applicant or the city is the applicant, but the general outline is that staff provide an introduction. The applicant or representative of the applicant has a chance to speak for up to ten minutes. We then have the public hearing, and anyone who would like to speak has up to five minutes, although we encourage you to keep your comments brief. We close the public hearing. The applicant, if there is one, has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes before I open it up to council colleague questions of either staff or the applicant, and then motion, discussion, and vote. So our first item, G one, it looks like I do have a couple people signed up for, is the annexation number CD two thousand and twenty-four zero zero two ANX by First Unitarian Universalist Church, and I will turn it over to Desmond McGeeo to introduce.
Thank you. Just one moment. Thanks, President Carlson. Yes, the subject site is thirty, thirty-five acres, including right away. It's located at the southeast corner of Viola Road Northeast and East Circle Drive Northeast. It's in a near-term urban expansion growth map area of the comprehensive plan, and it is contiguous to the city of Rochester, city limits on the west side, towards the north end of it, and on the east side and the south side property boundaries and along the south side. Public facilities currently exist to serve this site, which includes sanitary sewer, water, and water treatment plant facilities. The property owner does intend to use this site for a church facility use. As part of this petition, the applicant seeks the application of the Art and Zoning District, which is the default zoning district of the UDC, and the underlying zone comprehensive plan designation on this property is low-density residential, which R two is consistent with. Staff finds the annexation has met all criteria of the UDC. The planning commission has unanimously recommended the approval of the subject request. That concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time or after the public hearing.
We'll get back to you with questions. So there is an applicant, correct? Okay, just confirming, welcome, Mr. Joe Sem, right? All right, go ahead.
Thanks, Desmond. Mayor Norton, President Carlson, Councilmember Logan Joe Sem from Wood South, representing First Unitarian Universalist Church of Rochester. I got it that time. We do have members of the congregation here, so I was just going to ask, they raise their hand, just so you know, the presence. All right, thank you. We're just here tonight to ask for your support for the annexation request. That's really the purpose. We understand that there's further review that needs to be done with staff through the site development process and grading and those kinds of things, so we're just really here to ask for your support. We know we have staff support. We also have planning commission support unanimously, so we're just, we're here to answer any questions and ask for your support. I know that some of our friends and our neighbors are here tonight, too. I know that access is a concern. I just want to remind everybody that that's under the preview of the county, that they're the road authority for both Viola Road and East Circle Drive, and so we're working through that process currently. We do have illegal access off of Viola Road, and I just Centurion Court, Viola Road to Centurion Court Northeast, so we do have illegal access. We also believe we have illegal access off of East Circle Drive, just for the record. So here to answer any questions.
All right, we'll get back to you after the public hearing. All right, so I will open the public hearing and call Greg Terrosak up. And please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Sure, President Carlson, mayor, and council members. I'm just here as a member of the building committee for the church. I don't have a presentation, but in case there's a need to answer questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Okay. Paul Espazette?
Good evening. So the takeaway message I'd like to leave with you is that I would request that you do whatever you can to get access to the church property from Viola Road or East Circle Drive. Even though access from these two county roads is under county control, I'd like you to work with your county counterparts to find a way to provide access from those roads. So as I speak, I'll say we, which means my wife and myself, there are eight homeowners my, from my neighborhood, that I think support the viewpoints that I'm expressing here tonight. So I'd like to, at the outset, say that I do like having a church as a neighbor, so I want to be clear about that, but we are not happy with the traffic that that will bring to our neighborhood, and that's the issue that I have. So we live in the Centurion Ridge Villas. It's adjacent to the church property on the east side, and as I said, the issue is with access. I think the church should have access from East Circle and/or Viola Road to eliminate or at least greatly reduce the use of Centurion Court. The community development memo that comes out with the annexation package says that public roadways exist to service the site. That's misleading or at least inaccurate. It's not served by a public roadway. It's served by our private road that's maintained and cared for by the Centurion Ridge Village HOA. This easement, there was an easement granted in two thousand and thirteen, and it gave access for drainage and utility purposes and for ingress and egress to a previous owner of the rural land. That was ten years ago, and tonight you're talking about changing from rural to city designation. And the church has, was just expressed, they also want another access. So in December, there was a meeting with the county and just a discussion meeting, and they said that access, they, the county engineer, that access from East Circle or Viola would not meet the ordinance, so that's, that's the challenge in front of us to deal with that. At the Planning and Zoning Commission on April twenty-fourth, the commission voted to annex. One of the, one of the members supported outside the motion itself was to express support for an additional access point. So the road, our Centurion Ridge Village private road is appropriate for the forty-four home neighborhood, but not appropriate as a sole point of access for the church. Traffic flow and congestion will be a problem where the traffic, I say, converges between Viola Road, our private road, and the spur from our road leading into the church Road, our private road, and a spur from our road leading into the church property. At the neighborhood information meeting, I heard a number that was kind of impressive to me. The trip generation model said there would be five hundred and sixty-six daily trips in and out of the church property. Now, if we add that to our forty-five homes, and maybe four trips a day for, for those, that gets to be a large number of, a large amount of traffic going through it. A road that I would contend is not designed for that. So a number of changes have been made over the years to Viola Road, East Circle. If you go back in time, I, I can recall, I think, where there was a free right turn at the intersection, a big sweeping curve. More recently, the signal lights, lane marking at the fire station has been redesigned, with the roundabouts been added. The two lanes are now converging into one, going into the roundabout. And I think that the creative changes were made, and I think changes along these lines could be developed by the county to provide suitable access for the church. So what we need is, there's talk about a construction access and permanent access. We, we need permanent access out of the chute. And that's, they plan to start construction about this time next year. So that, that's really not a lot of time. I have three seconds left.
You have one second left.
Okay.
Final thought.
Again, please, please work with your county counterparts to help us get access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Espisette. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing. And after we've had a chance for the applicant to rebut, just reminding if there is anybody who decided to recuse themselves, this would be the time to leave the dais. Right, please step up.
Yeah, again, Logan Joe Sem Wood Seth. Really, nothing to add. We have the same concerns our, our neighbors do. So working with the county, I mean, the, the city support and having another access will be great. But again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the annexation, and that's really what we need to move this project forward.
All right. Okay, everybody stay.
Just one second. Order? Try to sweep it. Okay, thank you. Tech is not my forte. All right, point of clarification. So I believe conflict of interest is a huge issue, and we need to make sure we address that on city council, not just for church issues, but for things like Mayo Clinic and other things that we may be.
Keep it relevant to.
I am being very relevant.
It does not.
But to recuse ourselves to leave the dais is not, I think, the protocol. I do, I have many connections. I have been involved with many churches. This church is one of them. And so I am going to recuse myself, but I do not think I need to leave the dais.
We request that you leave the dais, so you will not be influencing others in their decision if you.
Well, I will not be speaking on the issue at all.
We request that you leave the dais. If you choose to stay, that's.
I choose to stay and listen to the facts and.
Point of order, please.
But I will not leave.
Councilmember Bransford.
Or city attorney to weigh in here. I, I, I was under the impression that if you recuse yourself, you remove yourself from the room, as I did in a previous city council meeting, but.
That is the recommended protocol, but we cannot force anyone to act a specific way. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler Craig, if you have anything addition.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, yeah, that's, that was the recommendation to you all as best practice in collaboration with the city clerk. That's the best practice for a recusal of a member, so that there's no doubt that they are completely removing themselves from consideration. And I guess it will beg the point, if somebody chooses to not follow that advice and stay on the dais, they will likely be considered as part of the quorum. So that could affect the voting requirements for this particular matter this evening. That may or may not make any difference, but it could make a difference in other circumstances.
Because it counts as an abstention for a vote?
Yes.
I have seen this happen, President Carlson, I have seen this happen in other instances where people have not recused themselves from votes that they have been.
Okay, Councilmember Dennis, this isn't about.
I am going to recuse myself of the vote, but I see several members of this church on the, on the dais.
Every.
And in the audience.
Point of order, it's every individual's decision, and we don't get to influence other people's decision. It's up to them. All right, so we will, if there is anyone who is recusing themselves who would like to leave, this is the time before we start questions and discussion.
If that's the protocol, I will follow.
Thank you.
But I also know that the members.
Madam President.
Of this church involve.
Councilmember Dennis.
You do not have the floor when I am speaking.
Okay. Well, then I will stay and listen. Thank you.
All right, your choice. We will ask any questions of the applicant or staff? Councilmember Wall?
Yes, a question, a question, please, of the applicant. You said you're looking for city support, and in particular, I think some of us on the dais would love to work with the county and the neighborhood to ensure that their access does not go on a private road. What kind of support would you need from us tonight to help make that happen?
Yeah, Councilmember Wall, thank you for that. I know it's out of your jurisdiction, so you're not making an actual decision. So maybe if there is a vote for support, if it could be part of the official minutes that the city council would support the, the county staff to allow us or secure our access off of East Circle Drive, that would be appreciated, if that's an option.
Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yetser, you sent an email to me on Friday about religious organizations having a rule, a state law. Can you help me with that?
Yes, and I'd invite the city attorney to chime in on anything that I missed here. The, the basis of what I was trying to point out to you is the Ralupa decision, and basically that means you can't treat religious institutions different than you would treat like uses. Okay, so when considering this decision, you should think about, is that, should this annexation happen? You should not be thinking about what the intended use of it is, was the message I was trying to get across.
Just what it's zoned.
Right, you should be, as we've talked about many times before, you should be considering all of the things that can happen in this zoning or, in this zoning district. We happen to know the current purchaser or purchase agreement, or however you want to look at it, is intending to use a church, but it's entirely possible that that could fall through and something else could go there. And again, my only point was, we should not be approving or denying it based on a religious institution utilizing the site.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Keen, or did you have another question? Councilmember Keen?
Oh yeah, my question's for city staff, or Desmond. I'm, I'm looking at the criteria that I'm supposed to use on annexation, about if it's, if services are available, if it makes sense for the city. There is nothing in there about access. That appears to be something that would come up at a later date, at a, a point when we're doing a general development plan. But my question to you is, is the idea that this being a private versus public road common to bear in this decision, or is it irrelevant? It's just whether there's an easement or not?
Councilmember Keen, as far as this application's concerned, I do not believe that would be something that you would take into consideration on, on the annexation decision. And the private road, when it was established by the previous developer, it was intended that this property take access from, from it. And there were no specifications about, you know, whether that pertain to, you know, a, a single-family unit, or a church site, or anything of that nature. So it is a legal point of access, even though it is private in nature.
But does that legal point of access change when a property goes from ag to residential?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Palmer?
I think Public Works will have to answer this one, but the question would be, off of County Road twenty-two, East Circle Drive, which is a county road, there's one access that both parties would like to have. Is there anything that we can do to, to persuade our friends at the county to provide that?
Thank you, Councilmember. I would say that that squarely falls under the county's purview. We could continue to have conversations with them, but ultimately, it's, it's their decision how to control access on their road.
Have you had any conversations with them?
I believe Sam and Dylan may have. Sam's in the audience here, traffic engineer. Maybe he can comment more on that if, if you'd like him to come up.
Come on up, Sam.
Mr. Budzino, welcome.
Good evening. Sam Budzino, Public Works. So just a reminder that what's before you tonight is the annexation.
Correct.
You're moving an administrative boundary. That does not generate traffic. If they come back later with a site development plan, say they're going to build a church, then we would review traffic volumes and see, can it be handled with a single access? They may generate enough trips that we'd want to require a traffic impact study, and the results of that might come back and say, actually, this would best be served by two accesses. But if the number of trips can be handled off of a single access, then that's probably all the county's going to allow.
And this is borderline germane, so is that sufficient of an answer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Or a motion? Or did you have a question? Is that, was that, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation of ordinance number CD two zero two four dash zero zero two ANX by First Unitarian Universalist Church for the annexation of thirty-five acres into the city, and directing the city attorney to prepare the ordinance for first reading.
Second.
Right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor?
Yeah, again, I, I went to the neighborhood information meeting for this. I do understand the situation. It's, I, I, we won't get into it here tonight, but it is a very odd piece of land. And as big as it is, it doesn't support, like, R. two housing that would get to be a big housing development. There's a lot of topography here in a way of building houses. But again, the, the business in front of us tonight is annexation. Does it make sense for the city? Is it, is services there? The city is on all the sides of it. This clearly makes sense to be annexed. The one thing I, I will add, though, is I, I do have concerns with the access here, but I also have concerns with what I will call forcing accesses, where the county engineers say there shouldn't be. East Circle Road would be a scary turn near an intersection on a fifty-five mile an hour road. They have a similar concern with the turn on Viola Road would be too close to the intersection, and would be potentially dangerous. The city, the end, the design engineers say they don't want to do that, and it's for safety reasons. So I, I would be, I would warn us from trying to get involved in their business and tell them to do something that we're not sure we need them, we want them to do.
Good points, Councilmember Keen. I had very similar comments, just this makes sense to annex as part of the city, as it's already surrounded by city boundaries. Any other discussion? Okay, Councilmember Wall?
I will amend the motion, in spite of the good rationale from Councilmember Keen, to add, with encouragement by the city council, the county look for access to this plot of land from either Viola or East Circle Drive.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Wall, you have the floor?
I, too, live on a private road and help pay for its upkeep. We put money into our private road every, every year, so that we know when we rebuild it, we have to pay for it. If this, if this is a private access, I don't know if there would ever be an agreement with the church, or the city, or anybody else to rebuild that road, but that is not a small expense that we prepare for in these private developments. So I, I would prefer to have an access point that does not use private roadways.
Just a point of clarification, is it to work with the county specifically to do an access point, or to explore whether it's feasible?
It's just encouraging them so that we're on record.
Can you give me the language?
Because we, we have, we have no authority.
Yep. Can you give me the language one more time? Encouragement by council to work with the county on?
On providing access to this plot of land by either Viola or East Circle Drive.
Councilmember Bransford?
This amendment makes me a little skittish. I feel like we're kind of crossing jurisdictional lines, and I'm not sure what encouragement means. I, you know, I do hope that there is some agreement between the county and the private development to get that turn. I just, I, I want to stop short of encouraging another jurisdictional body in that way. I, I just, that doesn't make me feel comfortable at all. So I, I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Bransford. Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I've sat through a presentation on the, on the access on County Road twenty-two, East Circle Drive, and originally, if you see two bumpouts there, you'll see that they had provided access when they plotted this piece of property. Nobody wants anybody doing anything unsafe. The church doesn't want that. The neighbors don't want that. But I think that, that we can encourage that just across the street from the upper entrance. On the east side, there's a west side entrance, a quick trip, and a lot of people use. In this, and again, nobody wants it to be unsafe, but I think that encouraging it right in and right out at that location is just encouraging. It doesn't mean we need them to do it. They have very good people working at the church that know, understand traffic better than anybody sitting up here. Trust me on that. But I, I think that they work well with the county, and I don't see anything wrong with encouraging our friends to, to, to help out the church.
Member Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Bransford. As to a, a notion that somehow we can't encourage others, as I view all levels of government, levels of government help to encourage people from other parts of government to do things. For instance, city informing states, state informing national politics. So I think that is within our reasonable work here.
And that's a reasonable decision.
I'm going to just comment or ask Mr. McGeeo or Mr. Yetser a question. So would this be a conversation during the preliminary plat instead of the annexation? I feel like it's.
Councilmember Carlson, or Council President Carlson, that's correct. Normally, these kinds of issues are looked at at the GDP level, a plating level, or a site planning level, not typically in the annexation process.
Mr. Yetser?
Yeah, and I would just chime in that this one likely won't have a preliminary plat or a general development plan. They're just developing one lot. So this would be sorted out prior to them submitting, say, a site development plan for this particular one. On a normal development, I would agree with what Desmond just said.
Okay, Councilmember Palmer, then back to Keen. Well, he, he wants to comment on this.
Just basically, all that means is that it's not coming back to the city council.
Right. Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I, I spoke a little bit about this before, but I'll, one thing I want to add, Councilmember Wall, when he presented this, he talked about it as the private road problem. One of my questions early on was, is this really tied to a private versus public road? And another option is to change that to be a public road. That's not what the motion is. That's not what's in front of us, but I just wanted to mention that here.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess I don't have an issue with encouraging the county. I think we always want the county and city to be working together and be really thoughtful, and I know our staff do a great job of that. It's more about, is this the safest? And are we encouraging something sort of before we know what the best approach is from our experts? So I'm borderline on whether this is a good, I, I'm not totally against it, but I'm.
We'll call the question?
Yeah, let's go. All right. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Would it change if a specific or historically documented access point were added to the amendment? As McGeeo mentioned, I believe there are historically documented access points in the original plat.
But the context of the neighborhood has changed so much, right?
Someone asked for documentation. I'm just wondering if adding that to the amendment... No, I know you didn't.
Are you asking somebody in particular?
No. Okay. I'm, I'm offering a suggestion for anyone to chime in on if they'd like.
Council President Carlson.
Yeah, go ahead.
I may have misunderstood what you, what you were going for there, but I'll just, no, you, you can't condition an annexation. It's either an approval or a denial.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Spindler Craig?
Well.
As we wade our way through this?
Only, what, what I would offer up is that I appreciate the varying perspectives that have been, that have been voiced, the concern that, of course, we can't condition it. We can't tell them what to do. I think you all know that and appreciate that. We've used words like encouragement and friendly, and that's probably fine. I would discourage us from getting into more technical aspects where we're trying to document prior access points. Appreciate the intention again, but that probably wades. Appreciate the intention again, but that probably wades even further into kind of getting into their business, so to speak.
Okay.
I know that's not the intent, but would discourage that.
Okay. All right, so we have the question called, so we'll, do we need a roll call? Are we good with a vote? So this is on the amendment to encourage the city and county to work together to explore access on Viola or East Circle Drive. That's correct. All right, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion, the amendment fails. We will get back to the original motion to approve. And again, hoping that staff in the county will explore the very best and safest option. Any further discussion on the original motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being here. All right, we will move on to item G2. Okay, G2 is a major land subdivision, number CD 2024-003 plat by YHD LLC and Hanson &amp; Young LLC to be known as Scenic Oaks West Third, and we have Elliot Mueller here. Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, members of the council, Elliot Mueller, Community Development. And I'll be giving the present, introduction to the major land subdivision, number CD 2024-003 plat by YHD LLC and Hanson &amp; Young LLC. The site's located south of the intersection of Scenic Drive Southwest and Scenic Point Drive Southwest, and the request is to plat sixty acres into ninety-five residential lots and five outlots. This is part of the larger Scenic Oaks West and Lakeview GDP, and it's going to be a phased development, so you'll see multiple final plats coming forward in the future. The style of development is consistent with the zoning district, the future land use map, and the general development plan. And the planning commission is forwarding a recommendation of approval, and that was with six conditions and unanimously seven to zero. So I'll stand for any questions you might have.
All right, we'll get back to you. With the applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? Welcome, Mr. Welch.
Mark Welch, GQ Engineering, representing developer Mark Hanson. And we have no opposition to any of the conditions. It's been great working through the city on this project and look forward to moving on to the next phase, which is getting construction plans approved, so. Here for any questions.
All right, we will get back to you after the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. I don't have anybody signed up. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? All right, we will close the public hearing. Are there questions for staff or the applicant? No, this has been a long time in the works, so.
So I would move adopting a resolution approving the major land subdivision to be known as Scenic Oaks West Third, six conditions for the subdivision of sixty acres into ninety-five residential lots.
Second.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I've attended a couple of information meetings out at this thing, and I think there's been a lot of good planning going into it. There's some changes early on from what we thought we were going to be doing a couple of years ago, but I think those all have been handled well, and I think we're in a good place.
Right. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Councilmember, motion carries with Councilmember Kirkpatrick voting nay. All right, moving on to G3, which is the pre-sale summary for issuance of bonds related to the downtown building energy project. And we have Mr. Anderson here to introduce the item. Welcome, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And this evening with me to present the information, I do have Chris Hogan, and she is a principal at Baker Tilly. She's also our financial advisor, who has worked on this project and many other projects she's been here in the past, too. And so with that, we do have the agenda kind of laid out before us. She will give a presentation on the pre-sale issuance of the bonds. We can hold the public hearing, address any questions, and then we do have two resolutions for consideration for the council after that. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Chris Hogan from Baker Tilly, municipal advisor to the city. And like Brian said, I'm here tonight to just give an overview of the city's upcoming bond issuance and also the public hearing for tax abatement. Just a overview of just the, some of the key events that take place when you do issuance of a bond. We, the city already held a public hearing for the capital improvement portion of this bond issue. Tonight, we're considering a public hearing for the tax statement and then the terms for issuance of the bonds. Part of that process is a rating that we will do together with city and S and P and Moody's, and we have that scheduled for the week of May 27th, and I will be back to talk about that. May 7, or June 17th is the proposed issuance of the bonds. And then, of course, that night, the council will consider the award of the bonds, and proceeds would be received July 17th. So a quick note on the ratings that I talked about. We, the city has the ratings by Moody's and S and P and AAA for both of those. The quick, quick update on the market, this is actually a market graph of taxable treasury rates because this issue is taxable. And it's a five-year graph. It shows a ten-year and a thirty-year bond issuance. And as you can see, we are a little bit higher than we've been. Those really, really low points was during the pandemic, and we're actually the lowest taxable rates we've probably seen historically. A quick overview of the purpose of the bond issue. It's, it's a single bond issue for eleven million four hundred thousand general, it's taxable general obligation, abatement, and capital improvement plan bond. The process is to finance through the city buildings through the transition from the existing heating to a geothermal district energy system. So the three buildings are the City Hall, Library, and the Mayo Civic Center. It's two phases. The total estimated project is twenty-two million nine hundred. This bond issue is paying just a portion of that, eleven million four hundred thousand other is paid with other federal tax credit, a contribution from DMC, and a congressionally directed spending grant. Because of the financing tools available to us, it's statutory authority. There is two purposes that we've taken up, and tonight's the tax abatement portion of the bonds and the other portion of capital improvement plan portion. It's one bond issue, but again, because of the statutory authorities that we have to work within, we are considering it as two purposes. I didn't mention, but it is taxable because through discussions, it was determined that you can get a higher credit, or tax credit through the Inflation Reduction Act by doing taxable bond issues. So that's why we ended being taxable. This is just a description of the type of, again, the authority by which you can issue the bonds. Tonight, we're talking a little bit more specifically about the tax abatement. There's certain tests that you have to do for both pieces. The bond issue is going to be a twenty-year repayment term, a ten-year bond call, and we set certain not-to-exceed amounts for both those purposes. Ultimately, the city is going to repay the bonds with the abatement revenue and, and general obligation pledge of tax levies. This is just overview of the actual, the financing sources and uses. It shows the, this is phase one, so you can see the City Hall. That next line should have been the Mayo Civic Center, and then the library, the financing amounts. This is again, phase one. And then the paramount of the bonds, we're issuing eleven million four hundred thousand. So tonight, like I said, public hearing, hold the public hearing for the tax abatement, and then considerations of two resolutions. One would be approving the tax abatement property, and the second one is approving a consideration of the sale that's going to happen on June 17th for eleven million four hundred thousand dollars. Any questions?
We will do the public hearing and then get back to you with questions. Thank you so much, Ms. Hoag. All right. You are welcome to have a seat, and I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? We will close the public hearing and invite the team back up. Ms. Hogan, Mr. Anderson. I do have at least one question, and then others may as well. How many applicants do we usually get? It's obviously a very short window of making a decision between when the proposals are due and when it comes to council. I know we've done this before, but I can't remember.
I'm not understanding the question, I'm sorry.
So how many applicants are? So you, we.
People bid on the bonds, I mean?
Yes.
Oh, it, okay, so it's a competitive borrowing?
Right.
So that means it's open to, we, we put together an official statement.
Oh, sir, to the mic, please.
It's a disclosure statement that talks about the city and the credit of the city.
Yep.
And that, that's, we use that as a marketing tool, and then the underwriters can bid.
Yeah.
I would say it's different every year, you know, depending on what's going on in the market. This is a little bit different because it's taxable. You don't see as much taxable general obligation debt. So I would suspect maybe a little bit less participation than a tax exempt bond. But the city's credit rating is so good, it'll be very well received in the market.
Okay.
So I will be back on the day of sale to give the sale results.
Okay, and can you just say one more time how you decide so quickly between proposals? The underwriters submitting their.
Oh, sure, yes, yes.
Coming to council that night.
Yes, thank you. So it's a very time, so the sale is at ten thirty, so you receive bids, and at ten thirty, it's done. So you'll have, and we can tally right then. We know who the winning bidder is, and we determine the winning bidder based on the lowest true interest cost. And it's calculated right away, and we know within a minute.
Okay, thank you. I was, it's not sifting through and making a decision based on a rubric or something like that. It's just the lowest. Perfect. All right, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, but one of them you answered, the idea, the reason we're going to taxable is because that works out, is a better, favorable for the IRA. Is that a thing that if we didn't have, if we did municipal bonds and went without, they were tax-free, we would not get as much leverage with the IRA? Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, well, both, both options are a general obligation.
Yep.
So one's a tax exempt, lower rates generally, one's taxable, but you're absolutely correct. A lot of analysis has gone in, there's been a lot of work on that to determine what the tax credit is. And, and we also looked at the differential between rates between a tax exempt and a taxable borrowing, and the outcome was you're better to do taxable and get a larger credit.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why we landed there.
The other question I had for you, just if you can help me somehow, I see these word abatement, and I've followed this for the last couple of months, but I also see things we have called like abatement funds that we have in the city and other things. And I just find the word used so much that I can't find a definition for it. Can you tell me what abatement is?
It's, it's an interesting concept in this regard. So it, it's, you're picking properties that are benefiting from the project, and it's pretty easy to do. And those properties, they're abating their taxes for this bond issue, but it really has no differential to them. They don't see any difference. It's still the same.
It's a financial technique, is what.
It's a financial tool. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other disc, or any other questions before a motion? All right, I'd invite a motion, and thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
With, with much study over the past couple of weeks, I will move to adopt a resolution approving the property tax abatement and adopt a resolution providing the competitive negotiated sale of eleven point four million taxable general obligation abatement and capital improvement plan bond series 2024A for the downtown building energy transition project.
Second. Right, Councilmember Keen.
Again, I think we've spoken on this a little bit. I feel confident that we're, we've done our work correctly here. The fact is, we did a lot of it with lower interest rates, and as they crept up, it made some changes. But I continue to watch the point that when we're in phase one of this back in 2022, this council committed a certain amount of money towards what we had to do to do HVAC for our buildings. We're still committing that much from our, from our levy, from our taxpayers, and we're doing much more because of taking advantage of these other, these other programs, and I'm glad we're on this trap, this, this path.
Yeah, well said. I'm very, very happy that we're going forward with the full plan as originally discussed because of these multiple strategies. So thank you for your thoughtful blending of funds. Sorry, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Awesome. All right, we will move on to G4. And this is approving, or excuse me, 2024 Annual Action Plan Amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and we have Mr. Brent Spende here. Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, Council President Carlson, members of the council, and Mayor Norton. Tonight, we got to have a public hearing on an amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan in regards to the allocations of block grant funding. And in working with our representative out of Minneapolis, when I prepared the action plan last fall after the council did the allocations for this year, they noticed that one of the activities that we had provided funding to, which was called economic development efforts, was not allowed since it does not meet one of the seven priorities found in our consolidated plan. So in working with other teammates in the city, we determined to take that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and move that over into the streets and infrastructure activity that we have. And that activity goes out and either does overlays and qualifying neighborhoods or also look at doing curb, ADA curb stops and streets in low and moderate income neighborhoods. So I did start preparing the RCA for this a week and a half ago, and then on that Tuesday before the RCA's were due, we got notification that of our funding activities or funding amount for 2024. When we do the allocations last fall, we are estimating that we would receive about seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We usually just do that off of what we got the previous year. So the notice I received showed that we were getting about fifty-five thousand dollars less than what we had planned on getting. And if the council members correctly, through all that funding mechanism, no more than fifteen percent of allocations can be dedicated to public service activities. So I had to go through and adjust those dollar, dollar amounts within those public service activities to get us down so we do not exceed that fifteen percent cap of funding. So in your packet, you'll see the original allocations that the council adopted back in October of last year. And then on the right hand of that slide, you'll see the recommended allocations that puts us within the cap of public service activities. Any questions?
We will get back to you after the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Spende. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing and invite you back up. Councilmember Palmer.
Under twenty-four. Under twenty-four thirty-nine, you guys sidewalks and infrastructure, and who's deciding where that money's going to go?
Our Public Works teammates.
Okay.
But we do have to qualify the neighborhood, so it qualifies as a low and moderate income.
Okay, since, since we have Public Works here today, and we're having problems with our ADA corners in low-income areas, why are we not putting more into that and less into the millennial relic?
Thanks to the question, Councilmember Palmer. I don't know if I have a specific answer for why we have one or the other allocated the way we do. I know that we're trying to spread the funding out to all areas that we could spend it, potentially, between the overlay and ADA ramps. We also have other funding sources contributing to both ends of that, so it's not that we couldn't reconsider the ratios between the two, but.
So if I remember correctly, our ADA ramps were twenty years behind? About, is that correct?
We have a transition plan that had us fully converting all of our ADA ramps in town by, I believe, 2047. So whether that's behind or not, it is in keeping with our ADA transition plan. The funding that the council approved here within the last year or two has helped us actually get back on track with that schedule. Previously, we were underfunding that effort and weren't going to hit that target, but now we're confident we can.
Is this a hearing that, that we can suggest that they make the ADA corners more, or is this not part of this?
Well, right now, we just have that one bucket of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. How that gets split up is to be determined, but they are working on projects to address ADA ramps and.
And who makes that? Public Works themselves?
Yep, yep.
And is that money they're going to spend this year?
Correct. The money spent this year by November 1st.
And they just found out about it two weeks ago?
No, they found out about it, well, last fall when we had the hundred thousand dollars. And then about a month and a half ago, I had a meeting with some teammates there to tell them about this additional funding that we had available.
So six weeks ago about, they found out that they have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars more than they thought they were going to have?
Correct.
Okay, I, I guess I strongly hope that they would do the ADA corners and get them up to speed because I know some in the neighborhoods that are really, really poor. So that's my two cents.
All right, any other questions before we have a motion?
I would move approving the amended, the amendment to the 2024 Annual, Annual Action Plan for the city's Community Development Block Grant Program and reallocate the funds.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Yeah, again, this is, this program has changed quite a bit over my time on council. I think this, we're in a better streamlined. I think this we're in a better streamlined focus. Now we do some of these different services, but the main focus has been housing rehab. Um, and I this this move towards trying to get some money towards ADA, uh, of course, I I would support that that um that priority too.
Thank you, councilmember Keen. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I would support this as well, moving into the ADA realm. But I would also like to suggest that perhaps you can look at allocating funds to some of the downtown sidewalks where a lot of our patients and visitors use. And they have physical limitations as well because of the services that they're going through here. And I know that there are some certain sidewalks that aren't on the SID for several, not several years, but a couple of years. And um I was actually one of those people that tripped and fell. And thankfully, somebody helped pick me up. So if if we can possibly get to those with this funding, that would be really great.
I will say it just has to make sure the the area qualifies as a low and moderate income block. So
Yeah, well, it doesn't unfortunately, but yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
But with Public Works here listening, I appreciate your comment. Um, other discussion? Okay.
And just one more thing, I'll just say we have not got our funding yet for twenty twenty four, but with after tonight, hopefully we get it within next month or so probably.
And then it has to be spent by November.
Yep, majority of it try to.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Svenby. Uh, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to G five, which is the growth management map amendment number CD twenty twenty four zero zero one G M M A by the city of Rochester. Uh, this does require a super majority and we have Mr. McGee here to present the item.
Uh, thank you, President Carlson. I just wanted to find out if I could present both this item and the following land use plan amendment in one single presentation.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have asked ahead of time. Uh, both do require separate motions and both require a super majority.
Right.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, the subject site is one hundred and thirty eight acres and it's located at the northeast corner of Saint Bridget Road, northeast and Forty Eighth Street, northeast. Uh, this is a request to amend the P two S land use map designation uh and growth management map on the subject site from urban reserve to industrial on the future land use map. And a change of the growth management map from urban expansion beyond twenty fifty to near term urban expansion. Uh, the subject site is contiguous to the city of Rochester uh on the east and west sides completely and contiguous on most of the north and south property lines. Uh, public facilities currently exist to serve this site and include sanitary sewer, water, transportation and water treatment plant capacity. Uh, if approved, uh, the property owner seeks development of twenty acres of the northwest corner of the site for a freight and transportation warehouse facility use. Uh, this land use amendment comes uh shortly after a city council study session on March twenty fifth. As part of the near term action presented for that study session, staff recommended council consider uh the inclusion of this property in the near term uh in the near term action as a change in the land use to industrial and the subject annexation, the subject property to be annexed. Uh, based on the response of that uh me- meeting, uh, staff is bringing forth forward this land use plan amendment and growth management map application. Uh, staff has analyzed the industrial acreage uh in both city limits and within the planning and service area and has found that the uh city has lost a a net uh of two hundred and nine acres of uh industrial inventory since the adoption of the P two S comprehensive plan in twenty eighteen. Additionally, many of those subject sites are pretty small, uh, only averaging six acres in size. So we don't have a lot a lot of large sites available for a large scale industrial development. Um, so we have concerns about both of those elements. There are several good el- reasons why we feel this is a good site for industrial development. One of them being it's away from low density residential areas. Uh, there is it's a large parcel, so it provides excellent uh room for buffer yards. Uh, there's near direct access to arterial roadways and regional transportation. Uh, it's close to municipal's uh utilities and it is fairly flat or level topography. Much of the sound surrounding land uses are also very compatible with the uh industrial land use designation. Uh, Planning Commission unanimously recommended the approval of both of these applications. Uh, and these are uh two separate applications. A separate motion is needed on both uh and should be provided. So that includes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time or after the public hearing.
All right, so we'll do the public hearing for both items and then get back to you with questions. So I will open the public hearing for items G five and G six. Would anyone like to speak on these items? All right, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions of staff? Councilmember Keen?
Uh, yeah, um, one one question I we you referenced back that we had this to talk about not enough industrial land and I do recall that. Um, and I recall this thing being discussed. Um, is this uh is this one of four possibilities or is this just the one that uh uh an owner came and proposed to us? Or is this the best from a city perspective or just opportunistic because they want to do something?
Uh, the 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 property owner did approach the city initially uh and uh with the desire to change it to industrial to facilitate a development. Um, but there are many solid attributes that from a staff standpoint, we feel it makes the site uh warrant or um apply the industrial uh designation to be applied here. Um, and we feel it would be a good option or a good choice uh to do so.
Okay, can can you help me a little bit just with the thought process that goes into says this is good light industrial versus this could be good um uh residential or this could be, can you talk, is it land? Is it distance? Is it transportation?
Yeah, pretty much yes. Um, in terms of the land, uh, it should generally be flat or slight terrain changes. Um, uh, regional transportation is very important um for a freight and distribution warehouse facility. Uh, but for lots of industrial developments. Um, and then, like I said, it has to have adequate utilities nearby. Um, and uh the final one is to be away from generally, you know, single family neighborhoods. And you know, we try to check all those boxes as far as looking for sites and this seems to be a very good site for meeting some of those criteria.
I have been told informally by other uh properties around there, not this specific property, but that area is low lying. That's when Seneca feels. Is this a is this anywhere near a flood plain or is there any concerns like that?
No, there is not a flood plain. There is some decorous soils on the site that will need to be investigated uh which might, you know, reveals uh some some things to consider as they go into their design phase. Uh, but um that's really, I believe, the only thing uh as far as an environmental concern is.
Last question, you did call out in the in the uh um proposed amendment is uh industrial one, not industrial one or and two. Uh, is it not a lot and uh heavy industrial would be allowed or would not be allowed?
Um, for the industrial land use designation of the P two S, uh, there are three different uh zoning designations that could go there. The first being uh uh business park, the second one being light industrial and the third one being special industrial. Uh, so those are the different kinds of zoning districts that can be applied in the industrial category uh of the comprehensive plan.
So this is any of those three or is this really the middle one?
Uh, it's any of the three. I uh the with the change to industrial, the applicant will or I should say the property owner will move forward and submit an application for annexation um and make their request for for zoning at that time.
Okay.
Um, I can't
Yep.
Be confi- you know, I I think I know where they're going to ask what they're going to ask for, but um, you know, that would be their application and probably they need to uh inform us of that first before I
Yep, no, no, I understand. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Um, I've received a lot of correspondence, phone calls and texts about other places within our city limits that have this type of zoning that's been applied. Would would there be, could there be our restrictions for usage on this particular property? So that uh developing residents in adjoining properties that may come up would not be um disturbed?
Yeah. Yeah, um, the the short answer is yes, there's zoning designations that you can choose. But just keep in mind at this moment, you're not choosing a zoning designation. We're just changing it to say that whether or not you can annex it. Um, but there are zoning designations that have our operations restrictions and some that don't. So yes, but a probably a decision for a a future conversation.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion for item G five, the growth management map amendment?
I'll move adoption of a resolution approving the growth management map amendment number C D two zero two four zero zero one G M M A.
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, yeah, I too.
Yeah, I too received some mail on this and trying to understand the proximity to residential, the proximity to the parks, the proximity to other sort of light industrial things there. And and I did try to look at the how do you decide this one versus something else? And I've come kind of come down to the idea that this is a good location. I think we as a city, when we talk about economic development, are very light on industrial land. And this idea of creating better opportunities is uh one of our uh economic vibrancy initiatives. And that's why I think this is at this action will fall under.
Thank you, councilmember Keen. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
With an annexation, are we allowed to place a condition on it to limit it to? Yep.
This isn't annexation, though.
Well, right, that's, yeah.
Okay. I feel a little sad that this piece of land will be developed. It is lovely and open and leading to game haven, but seems to make sense. What?
To me, it's not about sad that it's lovely and everything. It's the it's the fact that it is low lying. It's the fact that there is decorous soils within this area here. And I'm also feeling a touch of redlining going on with the numerous references of it's not around single family homes. That bothers me. Why do we place precedence on industrial zoning being allowed by multi-family homes, but we don't with single family homes? And as a council that is going for sustainability and resiliency and we acknowledge the fact that historic redlining has happened in this city, the usage or the way this is phrased is bothersome to me.
So the item G five is not, that would be relevant for G six in future discussions? But I don't know about uh redlining, but the environmental justice aspect of it is.
I'm bringing that up because that's the way it was worded in in discussion from staff.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I mean, I I I looked into that too, but when I look around the property, it is mostly um county, uh county works, it's a Baya Park, it's Olmsted County, other property. There are two, are three adjoining, but it's mostly, you know, the home improvement or light light other light industrial. So there are some aspects of that, but it's not a major part of it. So uh I think it does come into play, but I I didn't think it was what I I I don't feel that I could call that redlining.
Okay, all right. Well, let's go ahead and vote on the G M M A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay?
Abstain.
All right, motion carries six zero one with councilmember Dennis abstaining. And then the second motion around the comprehensive plan amendment.
So I will move to adopt a resolution approving the comprehensive planned amendment. C D twenty twenty two, C zero zero two CPA by the city of Rochester to amend one hundred and thirty eight point two acres located between Forty Fifth and Fiftieth Street from urban reserve to industrial in the city's land use map.
Councilmember Keen?
Uh, nothing to add.
Any other discussion? I'm just trying to decide how I'm going to vote before I go for a vote. So this requires a super majority. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right. Councilmember Dennis, did you vote?
Um, I'm going to abstain on this too.
Okay, so motion carries five one one. Councilmember Kirkpatrick voting nay. Councilmember Dennis abstaining. All right, let's take a seven minute break, reconvene at seven thirty and we will move on to our reports and recommendations.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Founding, you know, problem over problem. So, uh, I think that's it. Happy to take questions.
All right, I have a couple. I'll start us off and then hand it over to the mayor. So, you answered a couple of them, so they do receive a heads up ahead of time?
So, uh, ticket holders receive a heads up with every fine in like late fine addition. Ten day, twenty day, thirty day. This would then require in our thirty day notice, we'd probably change the text in that notice to include like the upcoming potential for collection. And then they would also then receive a, uh, an actual notification of collection. So be two messages, one leading up to it and then one when it happens.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, the other one is if it goes to collections, does it affect their credit?
So interestingly, um, I did some research on this and the answer is a little cloudy, to be honest. Um, it technically could, uh, collection agencies can report out to credit. It turns out it's more on the other side of credit, credit a- agencies and what their best practices are. And all three sites, um, typically, uh, you know, Experian, TransUnion, whatever, uh, typically tend to ignore collection note, uh, like a delinquent collection notices that are less than a hundred dollars for tickets. And so it kind of depends on the ticket. It kind of depends on the credit agency.
And what about our credit agency?
Say again.
Or the, the current contract that we would be?
Oh, I mean, do they send reports out to credit? Uh, I think they do. I'm not exactly sure what the timeframe is. It's not uh, immediate. I mean, there's always a, um, a grace period of when something goes to collection. And then when it would be reported to credit. Um, so their answer is murky, unfortunately. Um, and it's really not, the decision isn't really made on our end or even by our collection vendor. It's made by credit agencies, Experian, TransUnion, like whether it's going to show up on the, on their reporting or not. And they've got some like low end bars where they don't include that kind of stuff, uh, information. And that was the, the best answer that I could get in a couple of hours of trying.
Thank you for looking into that, Mayor Norton.
Thank you, Council President, President Carlson. You kind of went down the path I wanted to go down, which is for many families, particularly those living in poverty or paycheck to paycheck, even if it's not in poverty. Um, our checks in the state of Minnesota, because of the fee that the state puts on jumped significantly. Used, you know, the old days of a twelve dollar parking ticket, once you put that state fee on there, suddenly it's forty, forty or forty-five dollars. And for many families, that's extremely difficult. So as I was thinking about this, um, I, I was wanting to know the same thing. You've got someone who's already in jeopardy, already struggling, and you're going to dink their credit record right away. That's a really difficult thing. And once you get in that cycle, it is, it is a vicious loop. And getting out of it is very difficult. Getting loans, getting apartments, getting anything gets very difficult. So I, I was thinking of this two ways. One, well, certainly I would love to lobby the state to get rid of their fee, which we've talked about for years, but they have not removed it. Um, the second one is, it, it, does it need to be forty-five days? Or i- if they caught, i- if your notes came out and said in fifteen days or thirty days or twenty days or whatever your note says, it's going to collection. You can contact us and we can help you make a payment plan. I mean, I guess that's what I'm looking. Is there anything we can do? And I know you don't want to go down, you know, you certainly don't want to be the bank, right? On the other hand, if someone comes and says, I want to pay this. I don't want this to go to collection. I want to help. Is there a way to stop it from going to collection if they'll make some sort of payment here and, and work with the staff? Or is that just outside the realm of your ability?
Hmm, uh, Mayor Norton, Council President, Council Members, um, actually, it's not, that's part of the reason we want to go with IP laws. Because we maintain a lot of that control. And so what I would be proposing in our noticing is that we are adding a statement on every notice that says you could be in danger of going to collection if you don't pay this. You know, even at the ten day, at ten days, it's five dollars. At twenty days, it's another five dollars. At thirty days, it's another fifteen dollars. And we're telling them every time too, if you don't pay this, it could go to collection. They're getting noticed over and over again. And, um, I, I think I'd like to state to the sort of larger issue of co- collections versus, uh, you know, and how it can ding people's credit. And I think after four years of watching people get towed and having them come in, so that's another two hundred dollars on top of however much they might owe in tickets. Plus, um, just the stress and hassle of coming out of a building and your car being gone, like, because I can, not because of tickets, but I can tell you, I understand that feeling, having my car stolen in January in Minneapolis, not here. Um, uh, uh, like, I, I think the, the rub is we have to have an enforcement mech- mechanism that has some amount of teeth, but we, uh, generally, I would say best practices just in the country are moving away from criminalized efforts of this. That's why they did away with warrants. That's why we don't want, that's why towing is going away. Uh, you know, you're taking away the, the person's ability to do the thing they need to do to pay the bill. So in lieu of nothing, there's collections. Otherwise, this money just continues to float. And in most cases, these tickets are twenty-eight dollars. Even if you add every fee, you aren't reaching a hundred dollars. Uh, with the exception of one particular type of ticket, um, or if you park in a handicap spot. And I don't want to be, you know, overly obtuse and say, hey, just don't get a parking ticket. Like, I know it, that happens. Sometimes we pull into a spot, you can't see the sign, you're in a hurry, there's an emergency. There's lots of reasons. And we have a process for that as well. They can contest their ticket. They can speak to the city attorney. They can talk to a judge. Like, the collection is the very last thing. And we're there at every stage to help guide them in a different direction.
I appreciate what you're saying. And I guess anything we can do to assure people that the sooner they get in and talk to you and start the process, the less chance they're going to go to collections. And that we will do everything we can to help them. Because adding a ten dollar fee, I understand why we do that. It just makes it that much further away for folks who are living paycheck to paycheck. So I, I appreciate your assurance on that and I hope that's the case, um, because I, I really don't want to put our residents in even worse financial shape than they are.
Agreed. So, and I think, uh, the elimination of towing, though we did not initiate that, I support it as the person that runs the department that has to, uh, work with folks when they're in that situation. We've done payment plans. We've bent over backwards to do whatever was necessary to help people get their vehicle back and get their tickets paid. Um, but ultimately, we still, we have to have some sort of mechanism, uh, to collect on the tickets. And right now, we don't have one. And the only one we do have for extreme cases is going away. So.
All right, additional questions? I think we have a couple. Councilmember Keen?
I just wanted to get a feel for the scope of what's happening here. If we, um, can you give me some just like high level vague stats? That are like, we give out a thousand tickets a month and one hundred end up going to collection? Or it's much bigger than that or much smaller and ratios are very different? I, I just want to get some sort of feel.
Well, I'll tell you, at this time, it, it's kind of hard to put a thumb on those numbers because we've never used a collection process.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need a, like a specifics. I, am I in the right ballpark, a thousand tickets? Or is it like, I, I have no idea.
No, it's more than that. Um, hang on, let me get to my.
I don't need precision. I just need a, Sam, can you help?
Oh, sure.
We issue currently about two thousand parking tickets every month.
Okay, and just, just rough.
Every month?
Every month, two thousand.
Okay, and, uh, of those, would you say eighty percent are handled like administratively without a problem? Or is it like thirty percent? I, I just don't know these things.
Yes, I would say that's, that's pretty close. It's between, you know, seventy to eighty, eighty percent do get paid. And they get paid promptly. The people that pay them, pay them before the late fees start adding up.
Right, right. Don't, so I, I would imagine that's most of the, most of the people and that, and you're proven to that's accurate. Now, another sort of statistic I have of we write, um, or if we, if we end up, we don't know the collection stuff, but if we write two thousand, is it ninety percent to residents? Or is it fifty percent residents? It's good to have an engineer next to you.
We have a pretty substantial portion of tickets that are from out of state folks. They're, um, less repeating tickets of that, that nature.
This is what, this is what I'm trying to get my head. I think there is a fair amount of that, although I, I, I'm trying to establish.
Well, in the packet, we, we broke down the unpaid tickets by who's in state and who's out of state.
Okay.
I, I don't have that.
No, that's okay. Then that, that's there. And then, um, just on this communication problem, do you find that ninety-eight percent of the time we have a system so that when we write to them or something, they get it versus they've moved, we have an old address. Nobody knows they're being moved to collections. Are, do we have any feel for that? Is that, is that a, is that a, like a flaw with the way these things work? Or is it ninety-nine percent accurate?
Oh, I would say it's act, pretty accurate. Like, uh, we do send out notices. It's rarely, but happens where sometimes we have it like a ship's passing in the night issue where the notice has been sent out and they've already paid. But they still receive the notice. Uh, we do get some return mail every now and then.
Okay.
That's, but pretty rare. Um, and I always default to that the back of the ticket really contains all of the information that we, that they need. I mean, they, they receive the same information that comes in the letter when they get the ticket.
Okay.
Um, which is where they can pay, how they can plead not guilty, what the contest, uh, procedure is, et cetera.
Like I, I've come here prepared to, or go ahead, Tim.
Well, I was also going to add, the, the way that we look up people's registered vehicle, registered owner information for each vehicle that we ticket, um, we don't actually look it up until we need to send the letter.
Okay.
So on day ten.
So, good.
Latest information that the DMV has and then we'll send.
Okay, so if we have bad information, it's because the DM, it's be, it's, we don't have stale information. It's the, the stuff that they haven't kept it current.
Right. I mean, there's plenty of times that people don't report sales.
Oh, no, that's, that's right. And same thing with moving addresses and keeping your driver's license the same. So I just didn't know if that's one out of ten or a rarity.
I would say it's neither. I, I would say it's more than a little, but not a lot.
Yeah, no, but I think I'm getting, I'm getting a feel for it.
I mean, just because, um, and Sam mentioned it, like, you know, for in, for instance, if we do have a car that's been sold, we've ticketed somebody. They, the person, uh, gets a late notice and they say, hey, this isn't even my car anymore. We have a process for that. We don't just expect people to pay the ticket. We have a form, we, and that they don't have to pay it. And so, yeah.
My last question is, we're, we're going to move towards like approving or not approving a process. But within that process, do you really still have some leeway to say, well, we're going to make some judgment here? Or do we take that away by, by hardening a process?
Uh, I would say we fill a gap, uh, for collection, collecting fines that we have. And we maintain the same amount of, uh, discretion that we have now.
All right, good.
Because by going with our vendor.
Okay.
And we already have this mechanism built into the software that we already use. We just turn it on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. So I'll start really basic. We have meters so that people park and they leave and they move on, so we move the spots over. And everybody, I mean, it says on the meter, you got to pay your meter. Okay. The state, if we're writing a ticket, is it average for, um, a twenty-eight dollars? Is that correct?
That's our, our expired meter ticket is twenty-eight dollars.
And how much does the state get of that?
Twelve dollars.
So they get twelve. And this is about a break even maneuver on our part? We write them tickets to take care of the, the, the people writing the tickets? Is that about a break even?
I wouldn't say that it breaks even.
Okay.
If we're only talking about meter tickets.
Okay.
I mean, we have six other types of tickets. Uh, only two of those are three digit. And they're things that don't happen all that often, like snow emergency ticket, which given the parking ordinance, I don't know if that even. There's, I'm sure there's a, a scenario where that applies, but I don't know what it is right now. Um, and then if you park in, if you park in a handicap spot, it's a hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
So the state gets twelve of that. You, you had mentioned something about social security numbers. So if I'm going to get my credit rating ding, you're going to have to have my social security number, aren't you?
I, I don't think so. It's not, that's not being, we're not being asked to provide that information by our vendor. Versus the state requiring us to submit claims with that information, which we don't have.
You have their driver's license information, though. That's probably enough to cross, tabulate or whatever they need to do.
I, I just know that we don't have to provide it to the vendor.
Okay.
In comparison to the state.
So if I see the meter person ready, write tickets and I go down the street and I plug a quarter in each one of the meters, you can do that, can't you?
Is that relevant? I, I'm, I don't know if I want to make that call. Can you do that, Tim? I don't see why you can't. I mean.
Not your main. Just kidding, I don't know if it is or not.
If somebody's parked at a, a three hour meter and they've paid for three hours and you extend their time.
They're over.
It's gone down to an hour and a half and you build it back up again. That, that's technically violating a city ordinance for overstaying the three hour time limit.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
I, I guess what, what I'm looking at this is, is trying to chase people down, um, especially, um, people from out of state. I would like to see us wait till there's three or five tickets before we send them to collections. And that, that way we can bundle them. Um, but that's just my opinion that, that I think individually tickets, it's, it's one person missing it, you know, let it go.
So, okay, then I guess conversely, my question back to the body then would be i- if that's something you put forward to, to, to us, then how do we avoid being in this situation again in three years? Uh, if we're not going to collect on tickets, what, individually as they occur? Are you going to recommend to us that we have a dismissal period and?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just going to be right back here in a couple of years.
Think that if you.
Let's hold off on discussion till there's a motion, but hold that thought. Unless you have a follow-up question.
Well, I mean, you track the tickets, correct?
Yes.
You have them in your, somewhere has some, a, a computer has a, a ticket. And so if you see Sean's truck for three tickets, then you could send me. If you only see one for Sean's truck, wouldn't you just say, yeah, we're going to let that one go? Could you do that with this system?
Well, technically, yes, but for how long? What's the time period on that? And when does it expire? And then why are we issuing the tickets if we're just going to let them go? If I knew that was a po- policy and I got a ticket, I'd just never pay it and just not get another ticket until whatever the time period was. I mean, it just seems like a gap. And if you have a law, how do you enforce it if there's rules attached to it that just let stuff go? Seems like a conundrum that puts us back in this spot again in three years. When somebody just looks at the dollar amount of how many tickets we haven't collected and they're all one ticket from two thousand different people. We can't go back and collect on it then, though, because we've made a policy. So are we just dismissing them? It doesn't seem, doesn't seem to make sense in the grand scheme of having an ordinance that has an enforcement mechanism. That, that would be my argument for not doing that.
Just ask the question.
Yeah, and that's, that's my response at the moment with the information we've got.
Well, more questions to come. Councilmember Wall.
Are there, uh, other communities who use the same vendor, uh, for their collection of tickets?
Um, they have a lot of customers, um, not aware of any in Minnesota, but I believe, um, Rapid City, maybe Cedar Rapids as well.
So that probably makes moot, uh, the question that I really have. And that is, what is, uh, the rate of collection? What, what's their success rate?
So, well, yeah, so we, well, we don't know. In, in comparison to how we issue and collect on tickets, it wasn't really comparable to Iowa. Uh, and we're mostly, there's another section in the RCA where I talk about the potential for a fee and having six months to really see what the return rate is like and how much money do we, are we actually able to recover? Uh, and so I don't have a solid answer to that question right now, wanting to gather that data just between now and the end of the year. So when we start to reconsider these kinds of things with fee schedule next year, that's something that we'll be able to bring forward, you know, as a data point from our own numbers and not necessarily in comparison to another city that might have, uh, you know, not really comparable mechanisms.
Would you anticipate any better success, uh, with Minnesota plates as opposed to Wisconsin or Iowa or Florida?
I don't know. I, I wouldn't say so. Um, it, the other option where if we were pulling people's social security numbers and we were using the state department of revenue to do, uh, to provide their services for collections or revenue recapture, um, they would only be able to track people that are in their system. So only if you pay Minnesota income tax. So they wouldn't be able to, uh, pursue anything from any visitors.
Could I have an observation just from other communities? When you have that type of language on your ticket that is really encouraging people to pay upfront, it does just, you may find that you don't have a higher percentage that's coming in from collections. You actually have a higher percentage that never end up unpaid. Because it incentivizes people to go, oh, this might go to collections. I better make sure to prioritize paying this. So it's sort of a behavioral shift that you start to see in the parker. Sorry, I used to boot and, um, boot people. And then at ten tickets, we used to not tow their car, but revoke their driver's license. So, um, I, I think that really it changes the behavior of people taking the ticket seriously and that they need to pay it. And then being more strategic about where they park in the future. Um, and I think that what, one of the things that you talked about in the parking conversation during the study session was to have a more clarity for parkers on where they can park most advantageously. So that's something that the staff would also be working on. And in combination, that those two types of things would encourage people to seek out certain types of parking that would be more appropriate for the type of day that they're experiencing. Especially if they're an employee, something of that nature, could walk a little bit farther, but park a little bit cheaper. And then, um, the combination with the clarity that this is going to go to collections likely encourages people to pay before it ever reaches that point.
And you would have heard that four times by the time it actually happens. And, and if, that's not including updated language on the back of the ticket.
Um, so quick follow on to that, because you're talking about future, but for these back to twenty eighteen, would that be that they would still get a notice that this is going to go to collections? Okay, so they still have a chance to pay.
Yeah, we're not just going to flip it over. There's going to be a kind of a rollout, ramp up process where we've got to set it up in our system and then, of, then before we actually turn it to a collection situation, we send out, uh, notice to, like, every one of the, of those, you know, uh, vehicles. I guess whatever information we pull from DMV to get that, those addresses. So.
Good. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I've heard you say a couple of times, they will have been notified four times. That seems a little conflicting to me when there's actually data, the license plate maybe wasn't updated. The, they didn't get to the state sharing their new address, not license plate, but their driver's license. So potentially, they could have been notified four times. But in reality, some people may not be even notified once, except for the verbiage that you're suggesting placing on the citation itself. Is that correct?
That could be correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify.
I, I would add on to that, that that portion of people would be, likely be pretty small.
Okay.
I mean, we just have a lot of people that just don't pay. The people that don't pay just don't pay.
You have to update your tabs yearly, so the.
Well, you're supposed to. You, you're supposed to.
You're supposed to.
Yeah.
Or you're subject to a greater ticket.
Yeah, I just realized, I just realized during this conversation that my driver's license expired on my birthday at the end of last month and I haven't renewed it yet. I, I, that's what I just realized. Oh, my gosh. I, so, I mean, yeah, I'm supposed to, but I totally forgot.
Are the police listening or?
It, it does, it doesn't matter. I got to go renew my driver's license. But the one thing I like about this is that.
We're going to be waiting for you.
That's okay. Um, the one thing I like about this is that there's actually going to be an enforcement mechanism attached to a policy. Because I don't believe in having policies that don't have enforcement mechanisms attached to them. I think policies are really silly. However, the issue we're having here is with the policy itself.
Question, and then we'll get to more discussion once we have a motion.
So my question is, how do we make the policy tight enough? Because it doesn't feel with all this discussion that the policy is tight enough to actually enact an enforcement mechanism.
Say more. Tight enough and how? Because it's pretty, I, to me, it's pretty straightforward. You get a ticket. It has the information on the back. At ten days, it, there's a fee. At twenty days, there's a fee. At thirty days, there's a fee. At forty-five days, you go to collection. That's it. And we notify the, e- e- every stage of that as best as we're able. And being that we, uh, can't account for every instance of everything, we still have to drive down the middle, unintended.
Okay, okay, that's fair. Thanks. Don't forget your thoughts you were going to share earlier. Once we get a motion on the table, Councilmember Dennis.
Okay, thank you. So, um, just to pick you back off of, uh, Councilmember Kirkpatrick. I, I don't think every ticket is, all these tickets are not, in my opinion, equal. I think some of them, as Councilmember Kirkpatrick mentioned, just forgetful, I'm sorry, I don't mean, but like forgetting to renew your driver's license, forgetting to, um, oh, I, I, I was in this event at the chateau that was an hour long and, oh, I talked to somebody and now I'm past my hour long meter. There's a forgetful tickets. And then there's ones that, um, when you violate, uh, accessibility parking and maybe more, um, not so forgetful, but like, so I, I don't think they're all equal. And I think we need to look at our priorities, principles, uh, our vision statements. We have, we have, we're supposed to base all of our decisions as a council off of what we have agreed to as our priorities. And I, I kind of like what, um, maybe, maybe, I'm not trying to assume, but Councilmember Palmer was saying about having a forgiveness, uh, period for one ticket or I, I just feel like there is, um, you know, it's already sounding like it's a little bit subjective um, with, with, um, some of these parking tickets. So would that be something that could, could be, uh, put into place where there is a forgiveness for certain tickets? Uh, not, not all tickets. I, I, I don't want to get into the moral, um, you know, component of which ticket is, is, you know, needing to be enforced more rigidly. But, um, there is just a lot of struggling people who who have a lot on their plate, a lot of moving parts in their lives. And if they don't want to drive home intoxicated or they're, you know, they don't want to drive home, I don't know if Councilmember Kirkpatrick drove here, but without a license, um, you know, like leaving your vehicle somewhere. I'm not, sorry, I'm not trying to point out anyone, uh, sorry, but, um, would that be something that we could put into a policy to have, um, I don't know, like tracking tickets to see, hey, you know, we gave you a, you know, freebie because we're a compassionate city. And I believe you, everyone has, hopefully, has this memorized, but we are, we really want to show that we aren't out to use this as a revenue source. We're out here to make sure that, you know, laws are in, enforced.
But you all have the capability to make any policy that you want. I mean, and you said the word subjective in there somewhere. I don't know which of these tickets are subjective. I mean, if I use one of your examples, if someone's trying to decide between leaving their car and driving drunk, to me, a, a twenty-eight dollar parking ticket would be much more preferable than a DWI or a dead body or some other choices. So the person is still making choices.
True, true. And, and I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize. But that twenty-some dollar ticket could be a deterrent. Like if someone is paycheck to paycheck, they're like, I'm just going to drive home because I don't want to get that ticket. I mean, I, I really feel that.
But before we get into discussion, is there another question? Otherwise?
I do have more questions. Yes, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, and a couple, I, I'm sorry, interrupted. But that, that's something maybe we can look at, maybe modifying, um, with, uh, a motion. Um, but another question I had was tracking of tickets that are dismissed. I am curious on how that is done. And I'm going to use a real life experience. This year, twenty twenty-four, okay? In, uh, February sixth, I went to check my mail here at the city hall. And I parked, well, I drove around, all the spots were filled. People perhaps weren't supposed to be parking in the council, but anyway. Well, I parked with my government decal in the parking lot. I got a ticket, ran in luckily. I mean, it was like witnesses and everything. I ran in, grabbed my mail, came back out. And I contacted the city administrator and city deputy city. And I contacted the city administrator and city deputy city uh, administrator, both said, oh, don't worry about it. Don't worry about the ticket. You got the ticket that was uh, not, no, you shouldn't have got a ticket. You had your government thing. You, you, so they said, don't worry about it. And I'm like, oh, no, 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 I'll pay the ticket, which I think is, which I shouldn't have paid maybe because I didn't. But I paid the ticket because there's a lot of controversy. Um, dismissing a ticket by any government official is a crime. So I just wanted to um,
Madam President.
How do you, how do you?
That's not, that's not accurate. It's not a crime. We have some, we have some discretion. I have clearly and very narrowly defined the discretion that my office uses. And we refer everything else to the city attorney or to the court.
So you can fix someone's um, resident's ticket?
No.
Madam President.
That's not what I said.
My, my question is, how do you track?
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, MSK or Mr. Spindler Craig has the floor, please. They are allowed to speak during.
You called councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Councilmember Dennis. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, I apologize. Mr. Spindler Craig, as we've stated previously, the city administrator, the city clerk and our city attorney have the right to interject at any point as needed. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler Craig.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, councilmembers, Mayor Norton, this body can decide how you're gonna engage in this conversation today. Um, I would just suggest that to the extent that now there's misinformation being supplied to, to the public about.
What misinformation?
No.
I'm, I'm curious, just could you be specific? I need to know from my understanding.
So Madam President, my suggestion to you tonight, and you've reflected on this in a few recent meetings, is that if any councilmember cannot follow the rules and respect your decision, your recognition of who gets to speak at a given time, the councilmember needs to be excused from this proceeding.
Yep. All right, councilmember Dennis, I've already said this.
So my question, my.
Excuse me, you are interrupting me again. Enough. Not gonna tolerate this. I preside over the meeting. You have a right to say point of order if you have a question. Our staff leadership have a right to interject if they feel the need to. Please follow council rules or you will have to leave. That is your warning. And we will continue on with your questions as long as they are very relevant to this item.
So if I, if I may, council president, just a couple of points there, and I think Clerk Geisler's likely to reflect on this as well. Dismissing a ticket using our discretion that is part of the process. There's layers of discretion that you've heard about. There's a process of discretion within the clerk's office that's defined in a fairly narrow way. Folks who want to appeal their ticket to a different level and access the court system, that's a regulated formatted process that likely involves folks from my office. Folks with an opportunity to go to court, have a court trial if they want. We have, we try to respond in a somewhat consistent way and treating similarly situated people in similar ways, right? There's nothing improper about that process. We dismiss tickets at times and we try to use good judgment uh, when we do that. Any commentary about fixing of tickets is not appropriate here for a whole host of reasons. And I would otherwise encourage you to try to focus on the agenda item that I think is before you tonight, which is how you wanna handle a bunch of old unpaid tickets. Not reconsidering general parking policy. Should we do something different? That can be a conversation for another day. Those are my.
Right. Do we have another question beyond?
So, so I, I, perhaps I am not being clear with my question. My question is, how do, how does the city track the dismissal of tickets? When a staff or elected official or somebody for whatever reason dismisses a ticket?
Point of order.
How does the staff?
Point of order.
Track it? Is there a list of those tickets that have been dismissed?
Enough. I said point of order multiple times. You're not following our rules. Please do. This is it, councilmember Dennis. Clerk Geisler? I don't feel that's a germane question to this item, do you? You are welcome to answer if you feel it is.
I would agree with you that I don't think it's relevant at this time. It's a question that I'm happy to answer at another time, but.
We don't track, we don't track tickets that are dismissed?
All right.
Okay, on the record, we don't track tickets.
That's not accurate information.
Well, then I am, I'm, I'm not understanding.
Councilmember Dennis, please leave the meeting. I gave you multiple warnings. You spoke over me multiple times. You had a warning from Mr. Spindler Craig.
This is a, a question from the residents and I'm asking this.
And our clerk has said she's happy to discuss it at a later time.
We do not, as a city, track tickets that we dismiss.
That is. Heard, that is not accurate information. Anyone that is listening should feel free to contact the city clerk's office to get accurate information about how tickets are tracked in the city of Rochester.
Why can't we do it here?
Ms. Dennis, you've been asked to leave the meeting.
I will leave, but I feel targeted.
All right. So I would invite a motion.
I'd, I'd like to make a three-part motion. Number one, authorizing the use of a collection service retroactively. Number two, authorizing the dismissal of unpaid parking from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. And number three, authorizing utilization of the collection services going forward to collect unpaid parking citations after forty-five days.
Councilmember Keen?
I, I think councilmember Kirkpatrick said it best, that when we have these policies, we need to have a method of enforcement or they're really not policies. Um, and when we set them up with all kinds of escape routes, you should know that people will take advantage of those. So I appreciate that we're trying to set this up with very set rules. And I appreciate that there is some judgment that's allowed into the clerk's office and some again, again, judgment that's allowed at the, at the um, attorney's office and then the next step is the courts, which they can adjudicate as they see fit. So I think there's plenty of um, ru- room for adjudication here.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. I think that's pretty well said. I don't love it. I, the idea that it's going to collections and potentially affecting people's credit, which we know can be a cycle and opportunities is really tough to support, but I appreciate that you, this is a very thoughtful process. You guys have worked hard to develop and I think it does make sense given the multiple notices and encouragement to pay in advance. Councilmember, sure.
May I just add to that too? Because I think it's an important piece, the fact that we retain control of the ticket even in collection. That's an important piece for me because I know people get frustrated when they try to come in and pay something and if I had to say, oh, sorry, we've sent it off to the state. Too bad, so sad. That, that's just doubling down on the, on the sadness.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point and just shows how much our staff are trying to support people in, in doing this. Councilmember uh, Palmer.
Thank you. Just thank you and everybody else who worked together. You listed a whole bunch of people that took a lot of different effort to do this and bring it to us. And I think that it, it, it's the best that we can do at this time and we can always revisit it, but thank you for all your effort. Appreciate it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Uh, we are moving on to item H two, which is the city Rochester TIF for Tax Increment Financing Policy Update, and we have Josh Johnson here to introduce the item.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council president, council members, Josh Johnson, Strategic Initiatives Director for the city. Um, just coming back here uh, after our February twenty-six study session around housing incentives. Um, we got several recommendations from city council at that time, one of them being to create more flexibility within our current TIF policy and then to have that be a duration at the time. It was twenty-four months uh, with this TIF policy request, we're, we're asking to, for a sunset date of December thirty-first twenty twenty-seven, just to allow us more time to, to test the policy, understand how it's working, what might not be working so that we can come back with uh, further recommendations. Um, I'm here, so uh, the drafted policy was um, drafted by myself, uh, Ms. Woodward and then Mr. Svenby uh, with community development. Um, so they're also here to answer any questions. Um, after the study session, one of the first things that we did was peruse multiple different TIF policies from around the state and around the, around the country. Um, I'd say what separated the good policies from the not so good policies wasn't so much what they included in the policies, but what, it's what they didn't include. Um, so um, say another, another way, they were concise, they were to the point. Um, they're, they're really meant to be a first blush to understand what a, a city's priorities are, what, what are the mechanisms? And then um, to allow for further discussion once a project uh, gets underway. So one of our goals is obviously to spur development and the creation of housing and that's of all housing types. Um, so we, you know, to make the, the, our policy a little bit more evergreen, we took it from what's now over about nine and a half pages to four pages. I'd say we did that without sacrificing any clarity of what the city policies are and what our expectations are from developers and what our priorities are. A couple of the ways we, we narrowed down the policy is we consolidated a lot of different sections. We really created two main categories and that's public benefit objectives. And then evaluation criteria for development assistance and that kinda goes through what, what, what makes up a public benefit in our mind. Um, and then what are the evaluation criteria that we go through for each project under, to make sure that it's a project worth uh, discussing and bringing back to the uh, EDA board. A couple of other things we did is instead of listing, you know, details of state statute, we let those details live in state statute. Um, those can change over time, so if we're gonna get into details about specific types of TIF districts, those can be found in state statutes. Um, we also took uh, some duplication of language that like our relocation assistance had a section in the policy, but then it also had an attachment. We, we acknowledge those criteria, but they're referred back to the attachment, so just trying not to duplicate information. Um, so that's all to say, that's how we were able to sort of narrow down um, uh, our current policy. Some of the main policy considerations and changes that we, that we did, um, one of them is in the past policy, there was language that standalone hotel projects within the city will not be considered a priority. Um, we opened the door a little bit there uh, to emphasize that hospitality uses in the downtown core that provide significant room blocks for the Mayo Civic Center to leverage investment in the Mayo Civic Center and generate additional parking and revenue and hotel taxes. Um, we've seen some different changes in our hotel market downtown. One of the primary um, room blocks for the Mayo Civic Center uh, was a former Doubletree that's now uh, student housing, which is a, a great project. Um, but there is a lack of connectivity and proximity to the Mayo Civic Center and for that type of hotel type. Um, so we would open the door to say, you know, if they're, if they're gonna allow for room blocks for the Mayo Civic Center, they're well located, they're the property type that has been identified that that market needs. Um, we would consider it. Um, there are also other types of projects that come up from time to time. Maybe there's an adaptive reuse of a building that's being underutilized. Um, has high vacancy downtown or, or wherever in the area and maybe can be repurposed into a hotel. Um, you know, that might be a project that we would consider. So just, just saying that it's not as black and white as, as sometimes the language can, can um, direct us to. So uh, one of the other policy updates that we made is um, so we maintained prevailing wages for all projects, multifamily commercial, but we didn't make it exempt for, for, for sale, single-family properties. Um, I'd caveat that by saying that if there's ever any DMC funding used or if there's a TIF project in a DMC district, that it would still have to, it would still require prevailing wages per state statute. So that's the distinction there. I think that concludes what I wanted to, to cover, so we're open up for questions.
And single-family homes in the DMC district would be very.
Not as likely, yeah.
Unlikely, yeah, okay. Other questions? Or a mo- question?
Yeah, I, I guess um, I, I was a little surprised to see the hotel stuff in there. I think I know some of the direction there, but did you have like the percentages and things like that in there or what? When you said we opened the door, what does that mean?
Um, I think it would just open it for consideration. So there's.
Like at, like, like, trying to think of how to ask this. Is this by number of rooms or by number, what, what is the TIF policy for, for um, hospitality?
Yeah, and I could, let Ms. Steinhouser probably knows more, um, but uh, Experience Rochester did um, procure a hotel study analysis. So there are a certain amount of numbers and, and statistics that they're looking for in terms of housing or hotel stock.
So maybe I could jump in, um, councilmember Keen, councilmembers Mayor Norton. I think the key here would be that you, it really opens the opportunity to have the dialogue with someone instead of just saying, well, we don't have that as a provision within our TIF policy. Even though technically your current TIF policy doesn't say you cannot, it sort of says we, it's a vague word about hotels in the current policy, but it would narrow it to be focused on something that would have value and service to the civic center. Do I think that it will be to the degree that that study showed? Probably not, just because we aren't like every other convention site. We have some unique qualities in Rochester that are different um, than, you know, a city that's gonna attract huge conventions all of the time because we have unique users like the Mayo Clinic and other local users, but they're, the prox, I would say primarily proximity. And if they are willing to enter into an agreement that guarantees that they will block rooms, because the challenge that we have, even though there are any number of rooms downtown, is that the hotel property is able to get a higher room night rate just waiting for a patient visitor to come. So when you block those, you're blocking them three months out, six months out and that that would be probably the two key things.
Way in and.
Okay, good.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Just, and thank you, Council President Carlson, members of council, just to build off of what Administrator Zelm's indicated. Uh, a number of years ago, uh, it was not unusual for you to see a hospitality project come forward with the TIF incentive. Um, and then when we felt there was enough product in the market, you removed that from your TIF policy, really made it silent. So we were deprioritizing hospitality. We have lost product in the market. We have come back post-COVID. Um, we're already, Experience Rochester is already seeing some really great numbers even for twenty twenty-five. And so this is really in response to knowing that we need to see some of that products come back into the market. It leaves open the conversation as Administrator Zelm's indicated.
Okay, no, I, I, again, I.
Oh, I was just gonna add, um, the mayor and I, as part of the DMC C board, this has been a discussion around sort of rethinking whether we open it up to.
Okay, and, and I lived through that, like the, the early TIF going to hotels and the point that we got to the point of we, we need other priorities. So I, I lived through that and now I feel it changing back. And I think these kind of uh, constraints or guardrails are important. What I, what I, what we didn't have here and maybe it's not in there. There, there, like it is with affordable housing, there are structures to what we're willing to provide and what we're not willing to provide. Um, and I, I didn't hear that for hospitality, but, and I, I don't wanna try to get into it here. You're just saying the policy allows, and I, I think uh, City Administrator Zelm said it best, it allows for the discussion with these criteria being met and um, I guess I wanted to say that out, so.
Other questions? Or a motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution that proposed tax increment financing policy to support economic growth and housing investment.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I didn't say that, right? But I uh, a resolution approving it, but I think it's as, as presented in our, in our packet. Um, no, no, no further questions. I did wanna qualify on that, on the hotels. I think the thing on prevailing wage again is a uh, uh, again, on the way it's portrayed, that when I first saw it in there, I thought we were, again, this is the thing that's bounced back and forth. Um, I don't know if prevailing wage with the labor markets now is past what, what they were five and seven years ago. But um, I'm glad to see our policy will now reflect some flexibility.
Thank you, looks good.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
I didn't say aye yet, I say aye.
Okay, um, motion carries six. All right, moving on to the Rochester International Airport Air Service Development. And Ms. Elms, you're introducing or John Reed stepping up or?
Council president, councilmembers, Mayor Norton, um, it will be a dynamic duo of uh, myself and John Reed this evening. Um, he will be stepping up, but um, I I did just wanna kind of preface this by clarifying that we had a significant uh, presentation, which is attached uh, on the March, oh, that's wrong in the packet, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four study session. It's always fun when you find the error while you're reading it. Um, and it's been published, but it was actually in May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, um, that you had that just a week ago. Um, with Jack Penning from Bull Air, um, talking about the state of air, the airline industry, what we anticipate over the next seven to ten years, the challenges with pilot shortage and how that's really driving um, what airlines are doing and their business plans. Um, he talked a lot about the four major carriers of which we have two at the city of Rochester's airport. Um, that would be American with four daily to Chicago and Delta with, with three daily to Minneapolis. And what is before you is a request to fund up to one point five million as a minimum revenue guarantee to um, attract additional low-cost leisure service. Um, and that would be primarily to Orlando and Phoenix. We know that those are places that Olmsted County zip code residents are buying tickets. They are primarily doing so at the Minneapolis airport though. And when we had the low-cost uh, carriers here in the past, um, Sun Country primarily, um, at least in the. in the recent past, those were full flights that were revenue generating. And so just as a reminder, we also sent out sort of a written version of what was shared at the May 13th study session earlier today to try to refresh your memories. It was a lot of information. And that 1.5 million dollars would come from repositioned and holistic budget stability funds that had been earmarked for revenue mitigation. And so this is revenue mitigation. The airport is currently, in its book of business, relying on continuing COVID relief funds that they received during COVID, and that is helping to prop up the overall annual operation and continue to return funds for capital investment matches at the airport so that that's not coming from the general fund. And this would be a move to more quickly attract additional service, additional use at the airport, and additional direct revenue at the airport so that it continues to support itself in being a value to the community, because most of the travelers are community members and not business travel. That is a challenge post-COVID still, and also having that low-cost direct option where people don't have to stop somewhere in between the origin and destination. The final thing that I would just remind you all of is that there there was data shown, direct data, that we have from the prior flights that show that there is a significant inbound traffic that also comes from Phoenix and Florida on those routes when they're available. So that would be something that we could do near term, that would continue to attract folks to use the airport, continue to make sure that commercial service is a robust and viable option at the airport, which is the primary driver of revenue for the airport that supports all of the other things that happen there, cargo as well as general aviation, so the private jets that come in. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer it. The remainder of the funds that get you to the 1.5 million dollars is about $330,000 of general fund reserve that is over the 47, the 43% requirement. That is about 0.7, 0.7 of a percent of the of the general fund reserve. And again, an MRG is not a straight subsidy, it is a risk-sharing opportunity between the airline that's taking the risk to start up service and the airport that is requesting the service. So with that, I think we would be available for any questions.
Are there questions? So just coming off of the airport board, airport commission meeting where we are looking to get a nice chunk of money back to invest in future capital improvement, right? That's public, right? Okay. And somewhere around 1.7 million. So if we take away the next year's budget stability dollars, that check would potentially be much smaller?
Well, again.
Or could you just explain that relationship?
First, City Council President, Mayor, Councilmembers, thanks for having me. Thanks for allowing us to be in front of you last week to talk generally about air service developments, and I appreciate the opportunity to have you.
Is that better? Okay.
Such a solid voice, I didn't even.
My mom would say.
Didn't even notice.
To to answer your question, City Council President, so from a top-end view, traditionally, airport O and M costs somewhere about $5 million annually. In in the past, we've been able to give one, 1.2, 1.3, just depending upon the year, of revenue that we generated back to the municipality, which is held then in a capital development fund. As we've moved through COVID and obviously lived through some pretty diminished flight operations, as well as people actually just going anywhere, as we're beginning to come back out of that, when I look at it and you take away the COVID dollars that we were granted by the FAA, we're at break even or less at this point. And of course, part of our goal is to stay off the levy as much as we can, looking to develop revenue sources moving forward. We'll have access to COVID relief dollars through 2025. Beginning in 2026, there'll be none of those dollars available.
All right, got it, thank you. Other questions before we have the motion? Oh, nope, Councilmember Dennis, you do not have the floor. You do not have the floor.
Would I take up the meeting or is that one?
It's for the meeting.
Me?
Yes, you're excused.
Dismiss ticket for your friend?
Your microphone is not on, so thank you.
So you can dismiss tickets of your friends. I think there should be a record. Thank you, transparency is trust.
Keep moving. You're center me? No, just urging you to keep moving. Retaliation, one word.
If I didn't hear any questions, I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move to authorize up to 1.5 million as a minimum revenue guarantee to facilitate air service development at Rochester International Airport funded through the Holistic Budget Stability Plan and $330,224 from general fund balance within the general fund.
Okay, Councilmember Keen, you start us off, then Mayor Norton.
Okay, going back to the 13th, I mean, it was a learning thing for me. I still think of there's airlines and there's customers, and they have to come together. And I think what this presentation did is you've got to realize there's an airport in the middle there, and how does that operate? And there was some key learning, there were some things I looked at and said, I don't like the way, I don't buy into that whole way of looking at it, but there is this idea of the way the airlines are operating now makes it harder for the airports under the FAA rules to stay funded. And I think that I I looked at this, some of these discussions on, you know, if we had trains, is that a better way to operate when you're in 100 miles away from Twin Cities? Or is it another way? And if I had a greenfield here and I didn't have an airport and I didn't have trains, I'd probably lean towards doing trains for this distance. But the fact is, I have an airport, and I don't just have an airport as a city council member, anybody I represent has a stake in the operations of the airport going forward. And that scares me. That's, a stake in the ownership is also a risk. And I think what we're trying to do here, what airport operations and what city administration's trying to do, is look ahead on that risk and say, what can we do to improve that? And I think that idea of getting more of the, what we'll call our market, flying out of our airport, isn't just like an advantage to them or to lower costs, it is an advantage to our statistics going to the FAA and saying how we need to be funded. And that's important to me going forward. This idea of risk sharing with us, and again, I I have been convinced that we're not doing subsidies for these, we're doing like bootstrap incentives to get things running. We do really have a best case here that we will not end up using these for the first two things, and we'll have, be able to look at using the same money to incent other things. But realistically, I have to assume that we could spend this money. I have watched airlines come and go for a number of reasons, and for that reason, I'm open to the idea that this is a risk we're taking, and some of us may not want to take that, and that's where we're at. But I think that idea that we are owners and we have a risk in the future of the airport, I think is important for us to consider as we look at something like this.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen, Mayor Norton.
Yeah, I've been thinking a lot about this. I've shared information both with John and the city council about my reservations, about what we're doing and how fast we're doing it. As Chair of the Airport Commission, I was shocked that this came as a council study session, a report of the, you know, the work that was done, the information that was gathered, but that I, as Chair of the Commission, didn't see that report ahead of time. We didn't have a discussion at the Airport Commission meeting, and I had serious concerns that we're one week at a study session, the next week we're moving forward, and I don't, I don't feel like that's enough time to have given this the thought and and care it needs. And just to be really clear, I want to expand service at the airport. As you know, I support the the airport and trying to make it stronger, so it's not that 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 is something I don't want to do. I I know you have a challenge, getting the major airlines to come here, some are pulling out completely or disappearing completely and not providing the service we need, but the things that folks need are connections so that they don't just have to go to Minneapolis or Chicago, that they have another hub, perhaps heading to Atlanta or Detroit or Denver, to to be able to use our airline in a more effective way to get that connection to the next location. We haven't been able to offer that, and and I understand in our discussions that United isn't going to offer that, or some of the alternatives we have in the past maybe aren't there anymore. I'm just, what I'm struggling with is two things. One, the process that was used and the lack of respect for the Airport Commission discussion that I think would have been really fruitful for me in dealing with this. The idea that we're more concerned with sending people to a location for a vacation, that may be what people want to do this year. I have a really hard time saying everybody needs to go to Orlando for their vacation, and we're going to offer you a cheap way to do it. It doesn't, that doesn't feel good to me. I, Phoenix makes more sense to me because of Mayo Clinic being in Phoenix, it could, it has multiple purposes for perhaps a vacation in the winter or hopefully not in the summer, it's hot there, but perhaps business trips throughout the whole year. That one makes more sense to me. But even more than that, these are ARPA funds that came to the city of Rochester for us to deal with our our greatest community issues and concerns. And I feel like before we got to this point, it would have been, would have made me feel like we had done due diligence if we really talked about the needs of this community and what our priorities are before an idea like this came forward to say, is it the airport, or is it handicap accessibility in our roads, or is it mill and overlay, or is it, or is it, or is it housing? There are many needs in this community, and I wish we had had a discussion about what our priorities were, not your fault, before we came to the decision that this is how we wanted to spend it. So I'm just, that's an issue that I'm having with this, so I wanted to share my concern, both about process and about the selection of Orlando in particular, as where we're sending our folks. And that one, I have a harder time thinking that people from Orlando are going to come here to Rochester. We're sending our folks away to spend money in other communities, I want to bring people here to spend money in our community and at the same time build our our airport to be stronger. So I just feel like I have to say that. I will feel better having said it. The city council will act and we'll move on, but I just wanted to put those things on the table before we did.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Elms would like to respond.
Yes, and I'll just be really brief because it wasn't Mr. Reed's decision to bring this to the study session, but considering the funding sources, I felt that it was critical that the entire city council be made aware of the opportunity. The funds that are recommended were recommended in your holistic budget stability funds that you did have significant discussion about for revenue mitigation, so it's coming from that, that part of the funds that was a decision that the council made in the past. Yes, we could have come and had a broader decision, but getting Jack Penning to come here and and do that one time for the entire city council, considering the revenue sources that were being used and the risk that we have as airport owners, recognizing how business travel has changed and how airlines have changed, seemed important because those meetings with different airline providers are happening in May and June, so we could miss another cycle, and that would be up to the city council's prerogative. But it felt important to me based on the the conversations that have been happening across the air industry and that John and his team have been happening with, have been having with airlines, that this come forward in a fashion that would allow you to actually capitalize on the opportunity to to hedge against 2026 at the airport and make sure that our residents have viable options to fly to different places where we know they are flying. Orlando has a significant number of Olmsted County residents that are buying tickets right now based on active data and have been for many years to go to Orlando from Minneapolis.
And I know some of my generation have parents that have moved to Orlando and are coming back and forth as well, so I know that family and friends' travel is part of the consideration. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. I was excited a week ago to watch the study session from North Carolina, and I got there through RST to O'Hare and Asheville. And we came back the same way, and we were treated well, a great, I think RST is a great airport, we fly out of there whenever we can for all the convenience. I support trying to make that airport as strong as possible, and if leisure flights are a way to rebuild some of that so that we can look a little bit farther down the line into restoring some of the more hub types of flights. The profitability that the Orlando and Phoenix flights has offered in the past before those flights were taken away from us for various reasons certainly cements in my mind the idea that we're not going to spend a lot of the 1.5 million. I know it's a risk, but it just seems like it's a much smaller risk than choosing a route that may not return to us what we need. My wife and I are flying to Phoenix in February, and I've been hot on the flights out of Rochester, and getting there, going west is fine, coming home, it's two stops. I can go to Los Angeles and O'Hare and Minneapolis or Rochester to come home. If I wanted to add $449, oh, no, that's two stops too. I don't know where there's a one stop there. There's a one stop in here somewhere for another 400 bucks or something like that. So, you know, to to get those kinds of flights that people will use, boy, I'm I'm all for it. I really support any negotiations that we can do that would bring greater options to the region of southeastern Minnesota through RST.
Really good points, Councilmember Wall. Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. And these are ARPA funds, and the airport did take a hit for for COVID, and I think that's an appropriate use for it. I have a lot of friends who work in Jacksonville who come up to Rochester, and it's tough. And so they will drive, they do fly out of Orlando most of the time. So going to Orlando for them and people in Fort Myers makes a lot of sense that they can drive to, from Orlando down, it's not that far to do, and they'd rather do that, come to Rochester and fly into our great airport. So I appreciate your hard work on this, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. And the mayor and I have had a chance to exchange, so she knows I appreciate her perspective and also support this endeavor and hopefully bringing in some additional revenue and avoiding additional levy impacts in the future and just more options for families. And people are going to Orlando, I promise, and even if it's not our top choice. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Well, it's clear that I don't mind taking risks with my driver's license, et cetera. So I can, so I can appreciate the fact that this takes risk, and no, no business, no endeavor is done without risk. What is the maximum amount of money that we could lose with this risk?
The maximum amount is what you put on the plate tonight, that's 1.5 million. And I would say that long before we got to that point, we would.
Long before we got to the point of 1.5 million, we would have a lot deeper discussions with the administration.
And as you might recall, there are clawback provisions, so within the first quarter, we would, if if we saw that, we didn't think that it was going to be working, we would be able to mitigate that risk.
And I appreciate that, that's a part of taking risk is making kind of educated, reasonable assessments on how far you're going to go with things, et cetera, et cetera. I wish our airport was more utilized.
Me too.
I think there was a lot of private jets taking off today, more so than normal, weren't there? I heard them.
It was a busy day.
Yeah, yeah. So I I'm supporting this, and I appreciate the discussion, the presentation last week, and knowing that we will run out of the funds that the prior body authorized through 2025 will disappear. We need to do something, take a risk at one more time trying to incentivize the use of our airport. After that, I I I don't know what we're going to do, so.
Municipally owns the airport.
Yep, yep. So, thank you, John.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Great, exciting.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate the time and the discussion. Thank you.
All right, let's do one more. All right. The CIA veto of the reviewing the parking requirements for snow removal for winter parking. And I will turn it over to the mayor, but just a reminder that this requires five of us, even though we're down to six on the dais. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm not going to go into this again. I, I sent an email with, by veto message, which explained this is really a procedural issue. Asking for information is one thing, asking, asking for a policy change before you have the information is another, or at least the bringing back a policy change before you have the information another. So it's procedural. I would just ask that in the future, we separate those things, ask for information in a way. And I, I listed a number of those that are, are rules and procedures describe how we can do that. Other business is one way, particularly for items you want to come before the body in a study session that you would ask, you know, bring an item up and, and get some support from your colleagues and direct the administrator to put it on a study session. Very simple and easy to do and, and an appropriate method in it. And there are several of those ways. But when you bring a policy forward to, to really restrict the CIA for, for policy items, once you have the information you have and, and you have the second and are, you know, ready to bring it forward, that you do that. So I think the information's been provided by administration and, and if you need more, I think you can ask for that, or have a study session if you would like it about this issue. And as I also mentioned in the, the veto message, I'm, I'm interested in hearing discussion and hearing data and renewing and reviewing the rationale for why we did what we did. And I have no problem with that at all. So it was really a matter of procedure, and I hope we can do better moving ahead. So I'd ask that you uphold the veto, knowing that the information is coming. And then if you need to move forward in the future with a, some sort of policy change, that you do so at that time.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Otherwise, a motion? Or, or if there is a motion? All right. Moving on, Councilmember Bransford?
You can, I'm sorry, let me just point of order. And I mean, there, someone would have to make a motion override. If there isn't, then the motion's done. But you, we can still make a comment on the, on the...
If everybody's okay with comments, I think that's fine. It's a little strange procedurally, but...
I think this is a great time for discussion. I'd like to hear what you have to say, Mr. Bransford.
There's no motion on the table to discuss.
I can bring it up other, under other...
Do you have an opinion, Clerk or Mr. Spindler?
I rescind my request. Let me, I'll just bring it up other, under other business.
Your microphone on, just out of curiosity, sorry.
Yeah, he just wasn't talking right into it.
Yes, sorry. I, I, I withdraw. That's fine. I can, if, if you allow, I'll just bring it up under other business. It's probably more germane there anyway.
Yes, Madam President, if, if you're asking me, I would suggest a, a motion before you have some discussion about it.
All right. So the veto stands then. Do people need a break, or should we keep plugging along? Okay, so we are moving on to pulled items, which we don't have Councilmember Dennis here, but we will still go through the business of taking care of these. So F3, the 2024 updated election polling location designation.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, designate the updated polling locations for the remainder of the elections during 2024?
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Keen?
Again, I had done some research on this today to understand why some of them were changing so late. I was comfortable with the answer, so I'm ready to approve.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. F10?
I'd be prepared to make a motion for F10. This is an adopt a resolution supporting the voluntary reporting of performance measures for the Office of the State Auditor on the annual basis for the receipt of any eligible reimbursements.
Councilmember Keen?
Again, this is a standard business of which we need to do these sort of reports based on procedures and state laws, and I'm glad to see our staff on top of it.
Any other discussion? All in, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Wall?
And for any people in the public who would like to look up the documentation for that, very interesting reading. I think it reflects very well on the city of Rochester on our staff work.
Yep. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Finally, the gap funding to extend the overflow shelter. Is, are there questions of?
Point of order, is that F16 or F15?
Excuse me, F, is it?
16.
Okay, all right.
I have the wrong one.
Second?
Councilmember Palmer?
I would expect this to come back in the budget.
Your microphone's not on.
I'd expect this to come back for the budget for next year to make sure that we get our overflow shelter funded. So that'd be my only comment.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, 6-0. All right, we don't have any CIAs. We don't have any first readings. We do have one second reading, which is the annexation petition, number CD 2024001, ANX by Anthony Properties. Mr. Spindler Craig, go ahead.
And Madam President, if I may, just on those last pulled, pulled items, we'll certainly reach out to Councilmember Dennis if she has some additional questions related to those items. We'll do our best to answer them. For second readings, item K1, an ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 47.41 acres located at northeast corner of 55th Street Northwest and 18th Avenue Northwest.
I'll move approval. Second?
Councilmember Keen?
No, nothing to add.
Councilmember Wall?
Since this is not the place to discuss or overturn previous decisions, I will vote in favor. But for the record, state that I still believe we're erring in allowing annexation of only a small part of this larger parcel, which could provide the low-density housing that we need in Rochester.
Point taken. Councilmember Keen?
I tend to agree with that. I, I thought we did get a good kind of action at the meeting, though, where when they come back with the general development plan, it will include that, the, our one, or the, I'm sorry, the residential along with the other parts of it, which was different than how we came into that meeting. So I, while, while I understand what Councilmember Wall's saying, I did think there was some movement from Anthony Properties, which was positive.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we will move on to other business. Councilmember Bransford?
Actually, giving this some thought, probably the best place to, to, to bring this up. First of all, I'm going to throw myself onto the sword, on my sword here. And, you know, I, I have to really agree with the mayor and, and Councilmember Keen's rather terse, but maybe well-deserved tongue-lashing last week or two weeks ago. But at the same time, those of us who have brought to, forward some CIAs, I, I think have done so with, with good intent, and they've been executed well. I think the CIA process is meant as an avenue for us to bring up things to discuss that don't violate quorum issues. I mean, I think that's really the primary, the primary reason. But I am, however, concerned, and I'm eating my own dog food here, that their execution can be poor or imperfect. In this case, the execution was indeed too prescriptive, did not mean to poke anybody in the eye. Our staff do a great job. My intent was to help them toot their horn. They don't need my help to do that. They do very well on their own. So I'm, and, you know, this is just other business. This is a discussion. I'm not asking for any actions or anything like that. But I think we do have an issue, and we need to think about in some form or fashion how to revisit the CIA process and its clear connection to what we're doing right now in other business. And I gave this a lot of thought. And I, and I, so while our rules and procedures are functioning well, I do believe we need to improve the CIA process and the other business agenda item that we're in right now. My main concern being that the CIA process allows for the execution to become too prescriptive. I did, mea culpa. And, but the problem is, is that the process allows for that to happen, right? With very little guardrails. And there are ways to, you know, as the mayor said, there are ways to do this. But then we have the pendulum swinging to the other extreme in this agenda item in the other business, which is too loose. It lacks crisply defined intent and process guardrails. And I, I, I think that we really need in the future, either, I don't know, I'm, I'm only going to be on the board for another, what, eight months or so. But I think it really would be good to revisit our code of, code of conduct, rules of procedure, and, and really have a hard look at how we can maybe combine a CIA, which really is other business, just more formalized, with other business and to maybe figure out a way of, of, I don't know, I'm not going to spitball, but it just feels like they're connected and to somehow formalize that process in some way that puts guardrails on other business, which are really sorely lacking. And, and have a CIA process that potentially even puts an agenda item on other business. And not to be prescriptive, but just simply, hey, let's just discuss this. I have an idea. Let's kick it around. So that, that's really all I wanted to say. And
Thanks for bringing that.
Hit our under-over at night.
Thanks, Councilmember Bransford. That was thoughtfully stated, and I think there are really important discussions to be had. It's just the timing. Is it this council or is it the next council that needs to think about that? Yeah. Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to react too to Councilmember Bransford, because I, my training, which is different than when, when the rest of the council came on, was much more the council-initiated action had to do with two things. It was that idea of like, I need this, or I want the staff to look at something, and it's going to take a certain amount of time. And you didn't want individual council members making those decisions. So I think that was one of the things. The other one that I took is, was that we set up, we met early in, at, at, as a, like when, after an election and say, what are our priorities? And we talked about them, and we tried to deliver those to the council, the city administrator, who would then work those with the staff. And things would come up that would say, no, we want to have something that takes precedent over that. And that would take a council-initiated action to change that. Those were the two things I was sort of trained in. Those are not all in our, written up our rules. Those were my, like, understandings. That's how I came into this. So sometimes I feel like they're not being done right. I agree with Councilmember Bransford too, that other business was sometimes, you know, something's coming up next week, or there's these other problems coming on. But we've sort of gotten into this, a council member's report for what's, what's on their mind. And it's not tied to our shared goals. It's tied to our, it's, it's just somebody's agenda for what they want to be talking about. I don't really know how to address that, but I think it is going to be in our rules. And I, I, again, I think some of this is, I, I don't want to think we're going to be smart enough to create all these rules to keep us from doing the wrong things. We'll, we'll, we'll find ways to do.
But we can do better.
But, but yeah, and I think that's what Councilmember Bransford was talking about. Let, let's get a shared view of what a council-initiated action is and how we should be using our time in other, other business.
And it certainly is appropriate during other business to, for people to request if two people do for a study session on an item. But that policy question is a different issue. Mayor Norton? You're next, Councilmember Palmer.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. You know, the CIAs has become nothing but, but a headache for, for people who make them because you see something you want to change. So if I come tonight at, at a, at a other business, and I want to say something, the staff have no idea what you're talking about. We have nothing in writing. And so the excuse is going to be, I, I don't know what you're talking about. There's nothing in writing. The staff aren't prepared. When you do a CIA, it goes, have another council member sign on to it. You review it with each other. You say, yep, I like that. Let's send it in. And then we have a discussion. And then after the discussion, the staff have an idea of what we want. They'll bring stuff back. Sometimes stuff comes back two weeks, sometimes two months, you know, and some of them don't come back at all. So, so at some point, we need to figure out what you really want to do with the CIA. But just saying that it's a CIA and I hate them and I'm going to veto them doesn't help anybody either. And the other item that you're talking about is what are we doing at? What, what other things that we're doing at other business is how do we, as a, as a city council, want to set up our rules? And, and, and I'm fine with that. The one that I went to a county board meeting, I was, I was surprised at, that if you pull an item off the consent agenda, you have to have a second. I thought that that was a pretty good idea because, you know, just one person pulling 10 items and, and, and doesn't help us all. But if you convince one other person to second that motion, I like that. Now, do I think that this city council, the seven of us, can make up our mind and maybe in July or August come to a, a study session with a, a decision? I think that that's a, a fine thing to do. And then today, with our meeting, with one of our members being disciplined but leaving, by us not saying anything means that we confirm what the president says. And we have to back our president for our rules. And they are our rules. They are not anybody else's rules. So that's my, my two cents worth.
Saying that, Mayor Norton?
Thank you, and good discussion. On a separate subject, we, we, an individual came this evening to talk about having not received communication back from some of us about an issue, and I want to make sure that some member of the staff will follow up. So just looking for a yea or nay.
You did have some exchanges with staff about it, but I... If you would like to take more time on other business, I could provide you what I heard from Mr. Ward during the meeting. That would, please. So he did check with their operation staff, and they haven't had any outreach from any vendors directly. They are the folks that actually do, do the vendor signup. So, but if they did contact them directly, what they have set as the 120, they tried to make, they usually charge based on a sliding scale of gross revenue. So they actually, knowing that there isn't a lot of gross revenue, set a base. But if someone would contact them and say, I have real concerns about this. I don't know if it's going to pencil for my business. They have made exceptions and would consider making exceptions. Granted, they would sort of be on the honor of getting legitimate gross revenue figures from the vendor. But they, they would, you know, true up the gross revenue and say, okay, it was $125 fee, but I only made $1,000. I can, you know, I should only have had to pay the $100. So they actually never received direct outreach from any vendor that was contemplating being in the park. They rarely have repeat vendors because they have enough that come out. So even though it's per event, that also distributes the ability to have different folks have access to being able to present themselves at the Down by the River, I think we're just calling it Riverside Concert Series now. So part of having the fee is that they also are trying to not have only the same vendors come to all of the different Riverside Concert Series. So it actually was fairly well thought out. But if someone were to reach out to the Civic Center staff and express a concern that they want to be able to be there, but they have concerns about making, you know, that they're, that it's not going to pencil for them, they would, they, they work with folks all the time for renting the Civic Center and also would do so from a food vendor perspective.
So Administrator Elms, if I could just finish up. What, what our policy has been, if someone comes here and asks a question, that a staff member will get back with them and tell them to make that contact? Because I don't think it's reasonable that people are going to...
We will do that as well. I just wanted to make sure the council knew.
Not assume that they're listening at this point in our meeting. So, thank you.
I mean, I can't imagine why someone wouldn't keep listening.
Thank you to Mr. Ward for responding and for making exceptions as appropriate. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.